All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice of this meeting is published in the local papers and also posted in the lobby of this building. We're being broadcast live on Channel 34 and streamed live on montclair.peg.tv. First up is our roll call.
Chair Nguyen.
Here.
Vice Chair Brodok.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz. He's not here yet. Mr. Brandon.
Here.
Counselor Schlegel.
Here.
Ms. Willis. Mr. Rooney.
I'm here.
Mr. Ian Wally. Is he conflicted? I don't know. Ms. Lautman. Mr. Barr is excused. And Mr. Gilmer.
Here.
All right, we have meetings from April 23rd.
I didn't receive any comments on the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes from April 23rd? Okay, right. All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, for the record, Mr. Schwartz is here.
We have a resolution on one bay urban renewal.
It's really two resolutions in one, Mr. Chairman.
So A and B.
Correct.
Are there any changes to the resolution?
One question. Item 9L says there's going to be 17,000 plants. Should that be 1,700? 17,000 seemed like too many to me.
I didn't count them myself.
Well, they don't add up.
I know they didn't add up. I mean, I counted on the landscape plan for the Montclair Hospital site plan. It had 924 plantings listed. And I figure if you roughly double that, you're about 1,700.
I think we got a runaway zero there. We'll make it 1,700.
Okay, that works.
1,700, please.
Yeah. And 17,000 would be fun, but it might be a forest.
But how many of these are?
The hospital and that arena.
There you go.
Are there any other changes to the minutes?
All that we needed.
A motion to approve, oh, not the minutes, I'm sorry, the resolution.
Right.
A resolution for application 2548 and application 2550.
So moved as amended.
Okay, motion by Mr. Brodok.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rooney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
No, not voting.
Oh, not voting.
No, it makes a big difference. All right? Abstentions count like a vote. You're not voting, you're excused, you're not, you're excused. Not voting is the right word.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, and with that, that takes us to the continuation of the hearing on the Lackawanna Plaza application. Counselor?
My name is Thomas Troutner. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Keys, O'Shaughnessy, and Giottamassi here at the African HP Lackawanna Office LLC and Lackawanna SPE LLC for continuation of hearing on preliminary and final site plan approval with both variants of approval for a mixed use project at the former Lackawanna station. Mr. Chairman of the board, if you just indulge me for a moment while we introduce. There's been some developments which I'm sure the board is aware of regarding a recent resolution adopted by the Historic Preservation Committee regarding recommendations in conjunction with the project, which largely is what we'd like to speak to tonight. We have two witnesses to testify tonight for this evening before the board. And in that regard, just by way of quick background and history, I think, or hopefully everybody can agree, there's been some challenges in terms of developing a particular site in town. There were prior attempts, as I'll characterize them, at least my opinion, by the township and this board to reach a solution that would be acceptable to the relevant stakeholders within the community with respect to a potential redevelopment process for the site or redevelopment plan. And that was unsuccessful in some part because of an inability to have stakeholders reach a resolution and also because it was hard to reach an acceptable solution that would be able to work for a potential grocery store tenant, or at least in the opinion of my clients who are the property owner, in terms of site plan requirements that were being suggested. So our client, in turn, had evaluated site design options with potential tenants, including grocery store tenants, and with what my client has previously testified to, I believe, with limited options in terms of how to develop the site to satisfy the inclusion of a grocery store, as well as work within the site design constraints and pay some attention to the historic components of the site. We came up with what we thought was an appropriate site plan design, submitted an application for site plan approval, and that happened in December of 2017. Since that time, as the board's aware, my client has attended DRC meeting as well as two Historic Preservation Committee meetings, and that's all before the commencement of hearings before this board. And it should be notable that there was extensive testimony before the Historic Preservation Committee prior to getting here. My client would express that they listened to comments, particularly as expressed in the HPC's February resolution, which was submitted to this board with recommendations, and addressed or attempted to address through amendments to the application that was proposed virtually every comment, or at least attempting to address virtually every comment. At our last meeting, just by way of recent history, the HPC chair appeared and raised some concerns about the demolition of the interior mall that's on site. And the concerns were, as we understood them, because of some remnant steel elements that remain inside that interior mall, notwithstanding the fact that these remnant steel elements, they've been referred to as stanchions throughout this hearing, we were attempting to repurpose them, or at least 81 out of 98 of them is part of the facade and architectural component to the project. Per the chairman's suggestion, subsequent to that last meeting, we met informally with two members of the HPC to attempt to discuss possible further ideas to maybe repurpose the stanchions or take steps to come up with a solution that might pay some adherence to the historic components that the HPC is concerned about with the site, but at the same time, a workable solution that could work for potential tenants. Shortly after that meeting, the HPC relisted our application on its agenda, effectively, you know, repossessing this matter from the planning board, and, you know, something that we would describe as a procedurally anomalous action. And at that meeting, we were surprised to learn that, notwithstanding having extensively considered our site plan that had been proposed over the course of two meetings with the HPC with extensive testimony, the HPC had now decided to strenuously oppose the demolition of that interior mall that's on site and suggesting extensive redesigns of our site plan and even our proposed uses that are suggested as part of that site plan. And while we hope that the board feels that we do listen and pay serious consideration to suggestions by not only the HPC but this board as well as the public, our discussions since that time with prospective tenants make it clear to us that we can't keep the interior mall by eliminating the grocery stores at one point was suggested at the HPC meeting or otherwise. So we've come here tonight to open a dialogue on this issue. And we tend to do that through the presentation of, first, Mr. Brian Stolar, some testimony that would rebut what we believe are some factual misstatements circulating in the public domain regarding the interior mall. And we expect that we would hear from the board as well as members of the public after we have an opportunity to present that testimony, to address some of this issue. I want to, I guess, clarify from the outset, we do intend to come back before this board with an expert witness, a historic consultant, to respond to some of the HPC's recommendations, which we respectfully disagree with, but that subject matter being appropriate for expert testimony. And in addition to Mr. Stolar's testimony tonight, I mentioned there'd be two witnesses, we also intend to propose to address certain concerns that were previously addressed by one of our neighbors regarding a proposed solution to loading docks. And this is something we've been working on since the prior meeting, which it's not completely divorced from the HPC issue in the sense of completely redesigning the site, but at the same time, we hope it's something we can make some ground on. So with that being said, I would respectfully ask Mr. Stolar, I think he's already been sworn in, is under oath, but yeah.
He's already under oath, but you have to repeat your name for the record and spell your last name. Just repeat, I'm not going to put you back under oath, you're under oath. Just restate your full name, spell your last name.
Brian Stolar, S-T-O-L-A-R.
Thank you. Your witness, counsel.
Thank you, everyone. Just wanted to say a few short words here about where we stand and from our perspective how we got here. As Tom said, it's really been a long haul. We actually closed on the property in August of 2014. So it'll be four years in August. And we believe that we've incorporated all of the HPC comments from the first, from the two meetings that we had with them. That was after the DRC meetings, of course, that we had first. We're now adding the water feature to the horse trough, which you'll hear about from our professionals. That was the last, well, there's actually two items that we hadn't responded to. That's one. And then the other one, it's a problem in the winter, which is why we resisted it, but we're going to make it work. We're going to have to run a line that's capable of being blown out with air from the building to the horse trough in the plaza, and we're going to do that. And then there was a discussion, and actually, we followed it up in the meeting, so Chairman, you asked us to meet with Kathleen Bennett, which we did, along with John Rymnitz, and discussed the idea of possibly recreating sort of what train tracks were in the parking lot. And we have a problem doing it with pavers because of the material, different coefficient of friction, freeze thaw, 37 degrees, black ice, they react differently. Food store operators don't want anything to do with it. But we found colorized pavement asphalt that is made, and we're going to look into that, and we'll have that to present next time. So we think all in all, we probably have a way to have answered everything that they asked. The food stores that we're still talking to, that are left, will simply not accept the steel stanchions or any of the remaining concrete slabs that were on top, which is being called sheds, in the stores. They interfere with either the food, presentation, the shelving, the lighting, the signage. They'd have to design their shelving systems around them, but not locate it, if you locate them, and some of you are architects and professionals, in the exact place where the food shelves are. They end up sometimes in an aisle. It just doesn't work. And then to go move them all around to incorporate them in a fashion which we even talked to them about is just not acceptable to them. They just don't want to have a custom store, is what it comes down to. The open air idea we heard about, and that's just a nonstarter, you know? First of all, as I said to somebody earlier today, we're not bears, we're people, we don't hibernate, we eat in the winter. There's nobody going there in the winter. And there's no tenant who could afford to pay rent to be there for five or six months. And then I just want to point out a couple of factual issues as Tom Troutner referenced. And this picture here.
Actually, Brian, before you get going, so there's a picture we've marked on the board, which Janice, I believe, would mark as A24. It's a photo of the interior mall.
All right, yes, A24. You're going to, do you have physical copies, or you're going to give me with?
We'll give it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so photo of the interior mall.
Right, so what's been marked, A24. This was actually, I think, in Baristanet, and I read a comment in one of the public statements that somebody thinks this is the train shed, or maybe somebody's. I don't think anybody on this board thinks that. But I just wanted to clarify for the public, this is construction added in the 1980s over the train tracks. The glass and those beams were all welded onto the stanchions, which are the curved pieces that you see just projecting outside of what was the path mark and again on the other side. So all of that span and glass and steel was added, was actually incredibly creative idea where they welded it onto the stanchions that are still there, which we will also have in the front of our store, and then they put all the glass on top. And that's exactly what they did. And they had to do this to cover the tracks, and the only way that they could create more depth to get more real estate is they built the building behind, which is the path mark. And then if you could put up the other one, Kevin. They then built the backwards facing stores, which remain today as a Popeyes and, I forget his name, Pizza Ray's. There's whatever it is. So this row of stores, as everybody knows, eventually failed. They were never very good because they were always facing backwards, and they lived off the traffic of the Pathmark store. Even before Pathmark closed in March of 15, after what was their last bankruptcy out of a number of them, before Pathmark closed, many of these stores were failing. And we know that because we bought the distressed debt from the CMBS lender, the Wall Street collateralized lender. And if you look at this, it's not very attractive for the public facing the street, and it's not very good for a retailer. On those grids there, they would put the signs, but then you had to go inside. So those stanchions, by the way, that you see there are the original, and we would also be incorporating those to look like that, but we think we have a nicer design to incorporate them into the front of our store, as Mr. Stevie already spoke.
Actually, Brian, just to cut you off for a moment, so there's now a photo on the board which you've just referred to, which I think should be marked as A25, photo of exterior of the interior mall.
So that's the commentary and just a few corrections I wanted to speak to. And only one more thing, then Kevin Webb from Langin Engineering is going to get up and speak again. And you had actually asked a question of us, Mr. Chairman, last time, would the food stores be willing to block out rush hour times in the morning and the evening to accommodate the trucks backing up on Glen Ridge, which was raised as a concern? And we spoke to several of them, they said yes, but Mr. Heller, Carrie, who lives, his offices are next doors, he has offices and retail stores there that he owns and rents out, he still found it to be problematic. So what Mr. Webb is going to show you is a new design. It makes the store a little smaller. I think Mr. Webb will tell you about 1,500 square feet or something like that. And then it provides for a different type of loading. So he's going to show that to you now, and thank you for your time.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Stolar, you've made a number of assertions about what will work and what will not work here as it relates to the market, but you presented no market experts or no potential clients to substantiate your assertions here. You're basically asking us to rely on your statements and assertions of what is needed for this site and what can work. Is that not the case?
That's the case, correct.
Okay. Did you review, and I think we need to hear from this, did you review the various other ideas relating to use of the space in the atrium area, such as parking or other considerations that have been kicked around? Did you review that with market experts or potential clients?
Yes.
Okay.
And to finish that, one thing which I didn't reference, if you're talking about the idea of two parking lots and the back of house, meaning the trailer loading, being accommodated next to part of a parking lot with some kind of connection to a front parking lot, that was an absolute nonstarter for every food store. And candidly, we didn't speak to any experts because those people would be architects or others who specialize in food store design. We spoke to the tenants directly.
Can you name some of those tenants that you've spoken to that you've attempted to sell the space on?
We are not interested or willing to have a public debate right now and to be very candid about the names of stores because I think it tends to really deviate the focus from what we're here for. We don't have anybody who's willing to sign a lease. We actually are under confidentiality agreements not to disclose anything.
So just to review, you're asking us to rely on your assertions of what is and is not possible, but not willing to bring any witnesses forward about, to substantiate those assertions as it relates to taking down a historic structure that is designated both federally, state, and locally.
Actually, and just to jump in, I don't know that it's, the testimony was that we're not willing to, but that we haven't.
We haven't, number one. We haven't at this time, number two. We disagree that the stanchions and concrete slabs are historically registered on federal or state documentation. And with respect to the word assertion, I would only ask that the many hundreds of them that we've made over the years, that we've kept every single one, be considered of some value.
Can I just throw this log on the fire? I understand where you're coming from. In the business, there's different types of supermarkets, right?
Yes.
Different sizes, you know, smaller, medium, large, and I guess there's a trend in the field today for larger, the super duper supermarkets, right? Isn't that?
Well, the trend's really polarizing, larger and smaller.
But, you know, I guess what the question is, is it possible to have an expert who can speak to the different size supermarkets and what makes them work in different locales of different sizes?
It may be possible, and I guess the answer would be, we obviously can take that under consideration.
We'll take that under consideration.
Yeah.
I think it would just be an architect who does food stores, but we'll look into it.
I have a question for you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just saying, no, but there must be people who work in the industry that know what size, like, if I run a ShopRite, I know if I'm 60,000 or if I'm 80,000 square feet, and I know I need this much parking, and I know, there must be, there have to be someone.
Exactly, Counselor, a development, a supermarket development consultant, a person who works in this space.
Or somebody who previously worked.
Or has worked for supermarkets before.
For supermarkets, right.
I mean, it worked for Pathmark. It wasn't necessarily this site that caused Pathmark to go belly up.
This site was always a very poor performing site.
But we don't know the reason.
But it tended to work some because there was no other real choice. But over the last five years before the bankruptcy of the company, of the AMP Company, this site was underperforming their average stores considerably.
When Pathmark owned the stores, it was, when Pathmark owned the stores, it did perform better. And I can testify from personal knowledge of that.
Before the AMP?
Before AMP bought them.
Yes.
And I can also tell you that while Pathmark owned the stores, there were constant problems with the roof because of the way that it was structured. There were leaks, the store actually, the roof used to leak all the time, and they used to have to repair it all the time. And because they had incorporated the existing structures into that roof, that was really the source because it was the shape and the engineering at the time. All of that, you know, is to say that that was 30 years ago, okay? So, you know, it might be possible to engineer around that now, but to say that it wasn't a problem for Pathmark isn't quite accurate.
I think the town redevelopment consultant had identified the source of the roof problems and sent us a memo on that.
So at the last HPC meeting, several people of the community came up, they wanted to keep the train sheds, which is all of the stanchions. And this was never presented to us before about what keeping the train sheds would mean. And when we started looking at it, we saw that there was actually more area covered by the train sheds than the existing grocery store. And the grocery store is not historically designated, whereas the train sheds are. This would actually open up, okay, we get rid of the grocery store, which is just a box with air conditioning, and we can put parking on the north, we can also have access from Glen Ridge Avenue directly for the public, we could put parking on the north, we could have a much better serviceability because, you know, we're going to design it for a blank space for the trucks. The idea of leakage, leakage is a problem in every single building, and it's always solvable.
Well.
It is.
It is solvable, but there's a cost, there's a cost value consideration.
There's a cost.
And believe me, believe me, during the entire time that Pathmark operated that store, that roof was a problem. And if they could have solved that, and again, I talk from personal knowledge because I was Pathmark's attorney, and I did their real estate work, and I also did their contract work.
Right.
And if they could have solved that problem in an efficient, cost-effective manner, they would have.
They could.
But they couldn't.
Yes, they can't.
Not in a cost, not in a cost-effective manner.
Maybe not.
Not with the, not with the technology that existed at the time. As I said, maybe today, there's a way to do it, and a way to do it in a cost-effective manner.
I don't think you have to even get through those, Stephen. I appreciate what you're saying, but we did speak directly to food stores, and we can certainly look at potential for professionals. When the redevelopment consultant designed the plan and said that they, that their group spoke to people in the food store business, we got that plan, we went to every food store, including a ShopRite, it was public knowledge, who wanted a 65,000-foot store. And they said there is absolutely no way that they would consider putting a store there in the configuration that was designed. And I think the problem is, if you came to us and said, if HP Lackawanna, 2013, I think, whatever the year is in the entity's name, wanted to own and operate a food store, you had to do it in a certain way, maybe we'd be willing to figure it out, but we're not in the business. All we are is a landlord, and none of the food store operators are willing to have two parking lots that are confusing, and none of them are willing to have these stanchions and any pieces of concrete that are left inside their stores. It interferes with all of their layouts.
Yeah, but you're losing, you're losing absolutely everything that is historic by not including that in there. And that's the point of historic preservation, is to keep the historic aspect of it. These, the columns, they're probably the same layout as the columns in a regular store.
They're not, I could tell you per fact they're not.
Okay, tell me what they are.
Okay, you would have to design your store around.
What's the spacing between the columns?
Because the columns either end up in the shelving, in which case.
Please tell me what the spacing is between the columns.
I don't know what the spacing is.
You don't know? That's the problem.
I don't know standing here because I don't remember every number.
It's usually 25 feet.
Okay, I know they're not 25 feet. I don't remember the number, but I know they're not.
It's easy enough to figure it out.
They're not 25.
You get a good architect and they can figure it out.
They're definitely not 25 feet. I can go on record saying that it's a odd number, I don't remember the number, but it's not a 25, 50 typical type of column.
It's probably around 25 feet.
Okay, well, it's not.
Look into it. I don't think you have.
It's really not the point, and I'm trying to be as collaborative and open as I can here, but to be really candid, the fact is that we're asking whether food stores would be willing to design a custom store, make their shelving, their lighting, their signage.
Absolutely. We're asking them to do that.
Let me just finish, Steve.
Let me tell you.
And they're not willing to do it.
Yes, they are. Have you been to the Columbus Circle Food Mart?
I was there when it was built. I was there with a developer, I know the related people very well.
It works very well.
I'm very familiar with it, yes.
It's a hellhole without it. That's something you can deal with.
That's a little bit of a different animal. It's a $3 billion project, and people were willing to do things that they wouldn't do for this.
Absolutely. What's wrong with willing to do the project here?
Because for a food store, there's not enough of a return to make something so unique and specialized. We've had these conversations. We don't really want another four years. We're really trying to get it done.
No, we actually do want to have a grocery store there. I think you can figure it out.
I do also think that our offer and our plan is not really perhaps being considered in its course.
No, no, no. It's adaptive reuse, you've done very well.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem with that, but it's not saving the train sheds.
It's reincorporating them in an adaptive way that we think, to be really want, we think it's a lot more important for people to see things than have them buried into the shelves of a store.
It's not buried. The whole overhead. The whole roof.
I respectfully disagree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question? I think several times it's kind of come up. Question. I think several times it's kind of come up, like, if we get a grocery store. I mean, what happens if you don't get a grocery store tenant? Is that a possibility?
That's a possibility.
And so then what?
The longer we go and the more difficult we make it, the more the possibility grows. We don't...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't, Martin, we don't control any of the grocery change. Hampshire, who is a partner in this project, is a landlord for a number of supermarkets. Candidly, if they weren't involved, I don't think that Pinnacle would even have the, we're a smaller company, number one. Number two, we wouldn't have the welcome in a food store anymore. The amount of time and energy that a half dozen food stores have put into trying to design a store for this site is significant, and they don't want to keep doing that, you know? So, we hope there'll be one. I would tell you right now, we're confident there'll be one because there still remains interest. There's not much in the way of food store operation in Montclair. There's a very small food store on Bloomfield Avenue, and there's a not-so-big one up on Valley, and then there's Kings in Upper Montclair. And if you look at 38,000 people, and obviously the university and Glen Ridge, and then there's the Food Town and so forth, and you look at the drive distances, which is what they go by, they believe there's still a market.
And also, there's a lot of new construction going on as well that's walkable to that site.
Yes, yes, which is a good thing. And they're all going to start delivering, which is going to be great for the Fourth Ward, by the way, because the folks who previously, either elderly folks or other folks who don't have a car, were relying on these older taxi cabs that were there all the time, and now they'll be able to get the food delivered to them, which is really going to become the new market. Most of the grocers we speak to tell us that that business is growing at double digits and accelerating, whereas the regular business is pretty static.
I ask you to reiterate that once again. You're confident you're going to have a supermarket there?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yes.
The reduction of the size of the supermarket, what factor has that been in the fact that we've lost some of the interest? At one time, we were talking about a bigger supermarket.
Yeah, it's been a big factor.
And the decision, well, that's one of the concerns that I've had, that I would rather have seen us continue to offer the larger supermarket that was talked about. And I was wondering why that is not still on the table.
That's a good point, and I remember that you were in support of it at the time. Obviously, we were. And as I just said in response to, I think, Martin's question, when the design was done by the redevelopment consultant for the, I guess, for the council, that shape that that firm designed isn't acceptable to any food operator because, and I can explain it to you basically, it's too wide and too shallow. So, if you go to a food store, there's only so many registers across the front, another 15 or 20, whatever the number would have been, and not sufficient depth for the back of house, for the loading, for the storage, for the preparation, for the cold storage. It wasn't there, and it was going to get pushed further into the store. So, they simply wouldn't do it. ShopRite was on board to do a 65,000-foot store. The problem is that the final design that was imposed upon us changed the shape, and they weren't willing to do that. And secondly, it put a two-acre plaza in front of the food store, which they were just unwilling to accept because it made them feel like they were sort of marooned. So, there would be other options if the store was bigger, but the store can't be bigger without a garage. And then without the redevelopment plan, the garage doesn't work, and that's why we sort of are going here with a relatively straightforward site plan. And the parking variance we're asking for, just to be clear, if it wasn't said ever before, meets every ULI shared parking analysis that all of you have heard, every redevelopment project that's been here in town. We're not deviating from that at all.
So, the decision to not have a larger store had to do with the need to have less in terms of housing, in terms of your interest in the project? Is that what we're talking about?
No, the, the physical shape of what was given to us as what the redevelopment plan was, you may remember that this board made about 25 suggestions back to the town council. I think about six of them, if I remember correctly, were not resolved. And the shape of the store was one that didn't work to create 65,000 square feet with the garage that was included and the place it was included. There were other things, like the entrance to the garage was about 25 feet from the crosswalk at Glen Ridge and Grove, which would have never worked, but that was perhaps one of the smaller details. The shape was the issue. Thanks.
Okay. Maybe two questions, if I could. You had mentioned that you weren't sure if the train sheds were under the historic designation. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, our understanding is that, and again, we're going to have a historic consultant, so I'm not going to get technical.
That was my second question.
But the train station, the waiting room, which, by the way, before the current owners, before us got there, well, they were even there at the time, Hollywood Video had a suspended ceiling, as some of you may remember. No one even knew what that historic, beautiful train station looked like inside. And I think it was Pizza Hut and a Hollywood Video sign right on the Ludovici tiles. And the train sheds, which again are stanchions with slabs of concrete, just so we know what they are, they're not that glass, they were part of the station, but we never believed that they were really specifically called out. And even though we respect the station 100%, and we've committed to keep it 100% and improve it with the new plaza, also, I guess next time, we're going to talk about the historic signage, which we would like to work with the HPC on. That's going to go behind the horse trough to talk about what was here before and what the past was. But, you know, we don't believe the stanchions really should be included. And again, our expert consultants couldn't be here in time. We had to react to all this a week ago, from a week ago Thursday, and so we'll have somebody at the next meeting. You said you had two?
Yeah, well, my second one was maybe somebody, maybe your historic expert is going to answer that question, so I was going to let you defer it if you wanted to. But in that case, as my second question will ask, would you be able to put a second story on that grocery store? I know it's kind of wild to have a two-story grocery, but is that possible?
I guess it's possible. We were actually asked three things, which we've already asked, and we didn't want to be in a position of never asking, so we asked. Can we add a second story? Can we put the parking above, or could we put the parking below? Actually, we asked four things. Or could we bury the parking? Bury the parking, I'll tell you right out, is an absolute nightmare from a design and a cost perspective. I can witness it directly from the hotel where we decided, hey, let's do a basement, and it'll be nicer, and then the kitchen will be downstairs and won't be noticeable from the street, and the water is disaster. It's so hard. Putting the grocery store on top of a level of parking in New Jersey, in Montclair, there's not a store that'll do it. We were also asked, could we put the parking above the store? And while technically that's maybe even a little easier to pull off with ramps, the cost of that is just fantabulous. And then you have to put another level above that for the equipment for the food store. And then adding, making a two-story food store is just not something in this market that makes sense for them because, think about it, you have strollers, you have carriages, you have food. Everything has to be done in specialized pedestrian moving equipment, not just a stair and escalator. So, if you go to the Whole Foods in Columbus, and again, I was there when they made the deal, and I know those guys, Jeff Blau, if you know him, they had to spend millions of dollars incorporating that. But then again, their volume is about 25 times. So...
Thanks.
Just one more question, Mr. Stoller. When we bought this, it was a distressed property, I guess. It was bankrupt or going into bankruptcy, right?
No, no, actually, it was the exact opposite. That's what's so ironic. In 2010, Chairman knows well, A&amp;P filed for bankruptcy. And when A&amp;P filed for bankruptcy, without getting into the whole history, that put the debt into distress because it was a collateralized mortgage-backed security. And when there's a bankruptcy of a main tenant, it's immediately considered in distress. They hired an attorney to be a receiver, and they filed for foreclosure, and they put in what's called special servicing. A number of months later, the trustee in bankruptcy recognized the lease and started paying the rent, but it was too late. We ended up negotiating to buy out that debt, and we were all very excited. In fact, members of this planning board, I think Robin, you went with the mayor and I forget who else, to go see the new A&amp;P in Green Township or somewhere. And they were planning to put that in the existing space, and we were going to do something like we're still talking about here with the rest of it. And then about three or four months after we closed in August of 14, about November or December, the time between phone calls and meetings started growing. And by the beginning of February, we knew they were in trouble, and they filed either in February or March of 15 and closed for good. So...
So, you didn't get a bargain basement price for the building?
No.
Which was my point.
And then we had to add insult to injury because they had a long-term lease. Those of you know that cost was imposed on us to buy that out.
Actually, Kevin, before you... I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I would be presumptuous. I wasn't sure if you were going to open up to questions to the public.
You know what? I think that since this is a little bit of an unusual circumstance, I think I'd like to get the public all at once. So, I'd like you to put on...
No objection from us, yeah.
I think there's a couple of other people who we need to hear from, and then we can take the public's questions and field them as necessary, as they come up. That's what I meant by others.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, we introduce Kevin Webb from Langin, who's also previously been sworn in, but...
State full name for the record, spell your last name.
Kevin Webb, W-E-B-B.
All right, you may proceed.
Thank you.
Still under oath.
Understood. At the last hearing, as Mr. Troutner suggested, as we had presented, an evaluation of the truck loading area, and in light of comments from the board and from Mr. Heller, we went back to the drawing board to see what could be done to improve truck movements, particularly to try to eliminate or to the extent possible make it so as disadvantageous for a truck to have to back up on Glen Ridge Avenue. So, if I may, I'd like to put up an exhibit with a proposed modification to that loading area. So, that's A26?
That would be a, yes.
You will give me copies of all of these?
Yes, yes. We apologize. It's work in progress.
So, this plan is, identifies grocery store loading area exhibit CS 401. It's stated today, sheet 101, prepared by Langin. So, this is a blow-up of essentially the back of the grocery store, but it shows some certain important modifications that we've considered as part of this plan. If you remember, the prior plan that we had presented showed modifications to the loading dock in this area, essentially the northeastern corner of the grocery store, and the loading docks themselves, the loading positions, were oriented in a north-south direction. We had done that in concert with some recommendations we had received from potential tenants, and it also, we felt was advantageous because it took the current configuration, this is the outline here of the current grocery store, and its loading docks are on this, this western elevation. Mr. Heller, in a meeting that Mr. Stoller and I had with him, he expressed concern that historically the Pathmark trucks would enter in off of Glen Ridge and would then encroach into his parking deck either on the ramp in this location or in the act-rate parking, which is under structure above, in such a way that was, one, perhaps not permissible under the terms of the shared access agreements, but two, more importantly, was disruptive to the operation, potentially even dangerous to some of the tenants. So, while the other movement that we showed in the north-south orientation that we had presented last time solved those issues, again, we know and we heard from the board members as well, that maybe would be, there was an alternative that we could find that would eliminate those backing up movements along Glen Ridge. So, what we've considered here and what we're presenting is that we would actually demolish approximately 1,530 square feet of the building. We would add back in a portion of that, 831 square feet. The net effect on the grocery store is it would be 700 square feet smaller. And what we would do is orient, similar to its historic orientation, we would orient this on a western elevation. The advantage of this configuration, though, is we have far more room on our site without encroaching onto the adjacent property to do most truck maneuvers. So, essentially, we've given ourselves a little more breathing room by doing that. Now, this is speculative in terms of this is out now to potential tenants. We haven't programmed it to the extent that we had previously in terms of identifying exactly where the compactors are going to be or exactly where the ramps that would serve, say, box trucks and hand trucks going in there. But this is sort of our first pass to try to solve for the truck movements. And again, we want to get your feedback and see if you feel like this is a better solution overall. If I may, I'd like to turn to the next sheet, which would be A27, Truck Movement Exhibit, Drawing TM 101, also prepared by Langin, today's date. So, what we've shown here is that same configuration proposed, but identifying what we think are the four key truck movements. In the upper-left corner, Truck Movement 1, that's a truck entering from traveling westbound on Glen Ridge Avenue and backing up into what is the southern loading dock space with a truck occupying the northern loading dock here. So, truck goes forward and then backs into this space without encroaching on the footprint of a truck already at the northern loading space. And while we go beyond the property line that divides our property and the adjacent one Greenwood property, it's a small area, it's within the access easement, and this line here, just west of the extent of our truck movement, is essentially the stop bar for cars exiting that act-rate parking. So, we're in essentially free space in here. I think as part of our plan, we would even consider, if Mr. Heller found it acceptable, that we could put low clearance bars to ensure that a truck could not encroach further into that driveway in this location, and we'd do the same thing at these decks to the second level parking. So, we could ensure by having affirmative site controls that trucks can't get any farther onto his site than that. In the upper-right-hand corner, what we've identified as Truck Movement 2 is if a truck were coming eastbound on Glen Ridge here and then turning, and essentially hit the same point on Mr. Heller's property before backing in, and again, clear of an existing truck if it were positioned at the northern loading dock. In terms of the exit maneuvers, Truck Movement 3 in the lower-left-hand corner, this is actually one of the more difficult maneuvers because of the distance between Glen Ridge Avenue and this loading space. This is actually one of the controls when we consider all alternatives for how to redo the docks. This is about as close to Glen Ridge Avenue as a dock in this position can be and not encroach fundamentally on Glen Ridge traffic. It does cross the center line slightly, but again, we don't think that's problematic. And this is a very conservative evaluation of the turning movements and actually doesn't consider the opportunity if a truck were to come actually back up and then do a K-turn. We consider this the most conservative movement possible, and we feel like it maintains all the parallel spaces that are on Glen Ridge Avenue on the northern side, and also with a very minor approach into the adjacent travel lane. Similarly, Truck Movement number 4 shows the same movement back to Glen Ridge, eastbound towards Grove Street. We're assuming that we would impose that trucks could not turn left to go westbound on Glen Ridge, so we've shown all the movements coming eastbound. And again, even with a truck occupying the northern dock, a truck can vacate that southern loading position, turn essentially a 180 on Glen Ridge without affecting the existing on-street parallel spaces and with only a minor approach into the center line. So, again, this is for consideration. We have not detailed every last aspect of that as we wait for feedback from, from the market. But overall, you know, this is somewhat punitive to the square footage of the store. It's 700 square feet that Hampshire and Pinnacle have identified. If this is satisfactory both to the board and Mr. Heller, that they're willing to make that investment in those matters. that investment in those modifications.
What's the dark space that's above the position where you have the two trucks?
This is all a concrete loading area. This is space that could accommodate, might be a further dock position. What we're showing right now are potential ramps on the northern end and the southern end. It could be one, could be both. It's possible that this area could be used for a compactor or a compactor and perhaps a box truck loading space. That's part of what we need feedback from the operators for. But there is certainly more opportunity than even the configuration that we presented in this orientation. We've got plenty of space here to accommodate other trucks besides the two tractor-trailers.
So is that space is open, just like the bay for, to accommodate the trucks as you're proposing?
It has the potential to be, yes.
Has the potential to be?
It's open. It's not programmed right now. So, you know, but we anticipate that it would --
It will be programmed at some point.
Correct.
And it's going to be some sort of dock, whether it's, whether it's, or if not a dock, it's going, you're talking trash compaction?
Could be a trash compactor. It could be a space, as we had talked about the last meeting, spaces for smaller trucks to also essentially park adjacent to --
A dock, a dock for smaller trucks.
Right. But it wouldn't be, they wouldn't have direct access from their truck to an elevated platform. You know, it wouldn't be, it basically an at-grade parking space where a vendor could move their goods by a hand truck up the ramp and then to the elevated loading dock.
How close is it to the sidewalk, the opening?
That opening? I mean, the corner of this building's really at a one-foot offset from the property line. The sidewalk's only a few feet on Glen Ridge Avenue. We have the opportunity to screen this. There's enough room here with some sort of screen wall.
How close is it, though? I'm not, is it one foot? Is it two feet?
Well, it's one foot in this pinch-point location.
Right. And that's, that sticks out.
Move your head back to --
That point sticks out. All right? So that's where it's closest.
That's where it's closest.
Where's the opening? How, at the, at the other end, how close is it to the sidewalk? Where the opening's going to be?
In this orientation, I mean, I can scale it. It's, I would guess it's a probably approximately six feet.
It's kind of close to the sidewalk. Busy sidewalk, busy street, lots of activity for the post office. And that becomes an issue if you've got a lot of traffic going in, if you've got truck traffic going in and out of there. Noise, smell, what have you, you know, all of the issues that are associated with loading dock. You know, you know, you go down any of the numbered streets in Manhattan where the loading docks are, you know, you see how loading docks affect in close proximity to sidewalk. So I'm just wondering how that is going to be structured to provide some sort of insulation from the pedestrians?
Again, I'm, it --
Seems like it's awfully close.
It is close, and we, in my expectation, we would find some manner to visually screen that loading activity from that sidewalk and from using.
Well, it's not just visual.
Can you reorient it?
But I wanted to give you an explanation of what my expectation was in that regard.
Can you reorient it so it's parallel to the street?
Well, I mean, um...
Again, the answer to that question is yes, because you can move it in. It's going to make the small, it's going to make the store smaller. That's the, that's the short answer.
Well, maybe not.
Well, if you, if you move it, you're going to, you're going to change the dimension of the store because you've got that odd trapezoidal shape there trying to get the maximum square footage. I'm sure if you could have, if you could have done a rectangle, you would have done a rectangle.
Well, the thing is, is, you know, this is public versus private. And the public, I think, overruns where you're going to have the most green space or it's the most safety-oriented. So the private part is going to have to lose. They're going to have to make it parallel to the street.
And we can consider, I mean, the loading position itself is pretty parallel.
No, it's not.
Well, it's --
Where's the, where's the curb cut?
Curb cut.
All along, all along.
Correct.
So it's, it's --
You have it on the southern end of your loading dock is parallel to the street. You have that intermediate line in between that is not, which is probably the existing line of the store.
Correct. Yes, this line is the existing line of the store.
Right. So, but the bottom line is probably pretty much parallel to the street, which you could make the northern edge also the same because it's the same amount of space for a truck.
We can. I mean, that's a very slight alteration. As I said, what was key in our design was understanding at what angle this could be and still make the 180-degree turn to get out on Glen Ridge without approaching either on the parallel spaces on the north side of Glen Ridge and trying to minimize the encroachment over the center.
It's amazing what these people in box trucks can do.
Mr. Lang, were these changes developed from feedback directly from the market, from operators who?
No. What we've done, it's in front of the market, potential market tenants now for consideration. What this has really done was specifically to address tenants of the neighbor who said that he felt that the limitation of just no trucks backing up during those peak hours was simply not enough.
So you heard no feedback from any operator that the amount of loading was insufficient based on what you had proposed initially?
Correct. We've heard no feedback in that regard. And really, what we've done here is reposition essentially the same, I'll say, volume of, you know, throughput potential that was in our plan that we presented last time to this. It's disoriented differently to try to accommodate those truck movements that concern to Mr. Heller.
Has the length of the curb cut changed?
It has. It's wider now. In the plan that we presented before, it was approximately 80 feet, I think 78 feet to be exact. This is 110 feet. But for some context, there are two driveways there today. The combination of the two driveways today is very similar to this. It's just a matter of combining them together. There's a 70-some-foot driveway cut here on the western edge. There is a small island and a 33-or-so-foot entrance here. So it's a similar impact, I think, on the street frontage total in terms of the opening, but it's combined into one. Again, it's in the interest of efficiency to accommodate those four traffic movements which we presented.
How about pedestrian safety with such a wide crossing?
What we have, I mean, there will be continuous sidewalk. What's shown here is an apron. So we would be maintaining pedestrian movements across. Again, it's, in recognition, it's 30 feet longer than, than the alternative we presented previously.
Is there any guideline for, you know, the longest crossing you typically have without putting, you know, an island in the middle if this were, say, a street or some other type of opening?
There may be some guidelines, but I don't think there's hard and fast rules in that regard. I think we're on, on the outer edge here of what's appropriate. I think 110 feet works, recognizing that this building has to function on the loading side as well. If we could make it smaller and still accommodate those truck movements, we would make it smaller.
Of course.
But we'd maximize it to the extent we can.
I'm just trying to understand what's, what's the better benefit here? You know, the encroachment into Glen Ridge Avenue for a turning movement or a wider pedestrian crossing?
Well, that's why we're here, seeking your input on that regard.
Is there any reason why? Thank you. Is there any reason why the, that entire back wall? If I'm understanding your proposal, you're taking down 60% of it at least, right? Of the wall that runs parallel to Glen Ridge in order to make, create this new loading dock space, correct?
Yeah, in this portion of the wall, right.
Right. I'm estimating, that's about 60% of the wall.
More or less.
So is there any way why you couldn't take down that rest, the other 40% and pick up the rest of the room that's, that's along the back there?
You're saying you come parallel on this way?
No, I'm saying go up to the top of that notch that remains.
Okay, here.
And go parallel to the street, no opposite direction. Opposite direction and bring the back of the store in a straight line, parallel to the sidewalk. Maybe move it a little further away from the sidewalk.
It's possible. It would be at a net loss of square footage as you suggested. So, you know, we're trying to balance all those things.
Well, and trying to pick up the square footage that you're losing in the corner.
Well, the issue is, again, we have to go this far east, shall we say, to allow that truck movement to happen. So there's nothing we can do. We can slightly orient that, but it has to be this distance from Glen Ridge and it has to be this, shall we say?
Right. Well, but if you move that down instead of having the trucks on the southern bays, it would be in, the bays would be in the northern part and your, your other loading dock would become this, would become the southern part where your trash compactors.
Further in this area.
You would encroach a little further in that area, but then you would pick up some space at the top. Trying to offset that encroachment, that's --
It's possible.
I was just wondering why, why you didn't try that from the beginning?
Well, we're trying to minimize the surgery we're doing on the store in one aspect and two --
I'm also thinking about what the store is going, what it's going to look like back there. You know, on that corner, it's kind of zigzaggy now, you know?
It is.
Not, not, not the most attractive way to present a building, in my opinion. But asking the questions of possibilities, so.
And I had a question on the truck movements on the next slide. So would it be, and do we need to add it as a condition, that there would not be trucks larger than the ones that you've modeled here for truck movements?
The trucks that we've modeled are the largest that are permitted by Title 39.
Great.
So we've tried to accommodate what we can foresee, the largest legal vehicle in that regard.
Right.
And what's the wheelbase?
It's a 53-foot trailer with, you know, the difference between what is, according to ASHDO and the Green Book, a WB67 and what the largest vehicles allow in Title 39, its position of the axles is slightly different. It actually makes this maneuver, this vehicle slightly more maneuverable than what is a textbook WB67. But again, this is the largest vehicle permitted under Title 39.
What's its size again?
It's a 53-foot trailer.
And Mr. Webb, has any consideration been given to maybe putting signage on Glen Ridge Avenue heading east regarding truck traffic? Or the west, I apologize.
Right. So we recognize, and I know it was a comment in prior testimony, that we absolutely want to ensure that trucks, and I guess we're looking at the exiting maneuvers, that they're not heading westbound on Glen Ridge. We would have appropriate signage that trucks are not permitted to make left-hand turns or, shall we say, it's probably more likely the sign would say firmly, all trucks have to turn right towards grocery. So that would be included as part of, frankly, any modification or any version of this loading area would include said sign.
And just to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, on Glen Ridge, there would be no tractor-trailer reversing in this configuration?
Correct.
The bottom two movements are only forward coming out of the loading docks.
Correct. I said, this is what I believe is a conservative movement that they make in one swing. They would have the opportunity to come up essentially to this curb cut and back up and then do a K-turn out if they wanted, but that's only, shall we say, even more advantageous for them. We tried to look at the worst case.
And understanding it would still be 53 feet, but potentially with a different wheelbase configuration, is that what you would anticipate would be the movement in the adverse wheelbase configuration when it's not as maneuverable as this one?
It is.
Probably the K-turn.
It would be the same. Like you said, it would be, I don't know, it could make it within the confines that we've drawn here. But again, those, those vehicles aren't permitted in the district.
And it's, got it, okay. So still 53 feet with this wheelbase configuration is all that's permitted, period. Okay. I was worried the other configuration might, may occur, but, okay.
It will not, no.
Got it.
And I also have a question with respect to safety. I mean, we talked about it last, go around with your traffic person. People cross in the center of that street to get to the post office. So if you're making a right-hand turn as a truck, would there be some signage or would there be a stop sign or something to watch for pedestrians? Because it's going to happen.
I mean, we can certainly add that. You know, again, I mean, truck drivers, particularly those that visiting stores like this, are able to recognize when they're in, you know, the public domain on, on public streets.
On the other hand, they're making an unusually sharp turn. One would want them to have it in the forefront that people might be crossing right in front of them because that's what people do there. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Again, I'm going to defer the public questioning into a little later. And I'm --
I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor? Yeah?
So that actually concludes our witness testimony this evening.
Okay.
I just have one more question, Mr. Stolar, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah. Did you attend the community meetings when we were doing visioning about Lackawanna Plaza?
Yes.
Oh, you did. You heard all of the input from the community. There was more than one meeting. You went to most of those.
Yes, there at the firehouse.
Okay. Thank you.
Barton, I'd like to ask you to step up. You've heard the testimony, Ms. Ross. And you've heard the testimony. Anything that you want to add to it, that you want to ask?
Can I put him on?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony about giving this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth? Yes. State your full name for the record, spell your last name. Barton Ross, R-O-S-S. Thank you. Thank you.
And, and just so that the public knows who you are?
I am the architectural consultant to the planning board.
Okay.
Mic on? Your mic on.
Yes.
So I have not done, I've done three memos for this project. Two were at the HPC meetings, which I think was in January and February this year. And then I did one when it came to the planning board in March. I've been in touch with Mr. Stevie, the architect, throughout, but they have not done any new proposals for me to respond to since, I guess, they came here back in March. I've attended the HPC, the recent HPC meeting. I've spoken also with some, the members of the DRC and some members of the public. I think really there's three options, kind of big options that are on the table. One is the one I've been proposing since the very beginning, which was leaving the grocery store where they designed it, 40,000-plus square feet, and then leaving some remnants of the train shed in the parking lot. And, you know, there's many parking lots I go to where, you know, you park around the metal stanchions or columns. Some are open, some have solar panels on the top. There's many different ways that can be done. And I think it's very important that the stanchions or columns remain in their existing place because that would be historic preservation. Once we start picking them up and moving them around, that's more like recycling or salvaging of historic materials, which is well and good as, you know, in its own right. And that's what we're doing at the front of the supermarket, which is proposed now, which is great. Some are being incorporated into the new facade. I think that's a very good thing.
So just to be clear, so the public is clear and everyone, you're saying that in your opinion, that parking plan could be continued using the existing stanchions, but opening up the atrium area where cars could be parked underneath. Is that your testimony?
Correct. And I reached out this past week to Jerry from Level G Associates about how many parking spaces we could really get away with at the site. And it seems like from what's proposed now, we could, you know, obviously, we're going to lose a couple of spaces because you have to work around where the existing columns would be. But it seems like that would be an acceptable factor for this development.
Okay. From your standpoint and after discussions with the park, with the board's parking consultant?
Yes, sir.
Do you believe that we could keep the existing space plan for the supermarket, but just modify the parking area, keeping, putting now parking underneath the atrium spaces, keeping the and preserving the preservation elements, but maintaining a sufficient enough parking spots to accommodate the product? Is that your testimony?
Yes. And this is what -- Yes. And this is what we started to do with the architect a few months back, which was how can we incorporate these? We looked at possibly doing.
Why don't you show it to Mr. Cowan?
Yeah, this has been presented before.
Right. And then, then you should mark that. And I guess we'd like to see it.
As a B, as a B exhibit.
Sure.
B1?
B1, if it's the first exhibit.
I'll just bring up the chairman.
I think I have it right here.
Thank you.
Mentioned there were other plans.
So that's.
He's proposing, you're saying you're parking the cars underneath the existing arches, train sheds?
Correct.
And where, inside, sensibly inside the space, what's, right?
So, no.
If you look at the picture,
Yeah.
I think, I think it would give you a much better idea.
What I proposed many months ago, I thought was the most workable compromise, which was leaving the stanchions or columns in place, but you have the definition of where the train sheds would have been.
I think, well, I think I actually brought that up too at a meeting. And I believe that the applicant's response was, at the time, if I'm recalling correctly, that, that it was a liability issue for the operators who he had discussed it with. Now, I don't remember whether you said multiple operators or one that you were talking to. You want to clarify that, Mr.?
Yeah, I'll clarify that. Everybody that we spoke to, every possible operator, was concerned about the pavers in particular being an issue. The second thing they're all concerned about is if we put anything on the top of these stanchions other than streetlights, that would block their signage from the road. But as I said before, and we certainly did get Mr. Ross's report and, and your comment and suggestion last time, we found this asphalt that we can colorize, it doesn't have a different coefficient of friction.
But what about the, what about the metal that we're talking about?
And, and we're talking to several people about trying to make streetlight-type stanchions that look like these.
What if they're not streetlights? What if they're just the stanchions?
I guess we can look at that as well. But by the way, the idea of leaving them where they are probably changes the entire parking lot layout. So that's something we'd have to look at as well.
Well, right. It would, it would alter the parking lot layout.
It might.
I would be curious to see, and I don't know whether, when you were talking with Mr. Giosa,
Yes.
whether you actually worked out a draft of how the parking would be situated in order to determine how many spots would be lost. But I would, I would be interested in seeing how, you know, how it could work and what it would actually look like for the lot itself.
We'll resolve, we'll provide that to you and to Jerry to review.
Yeah, my purpose in reaching out to Jerry was really just, is this possible if we lost 10 or 20 spaces? Because obviously, you're right, with the stanchions, there's gonna be some parking spaces that have to work around it. And I even had an idea to make it easier on the applicants that maybe, you know, maybe it's not every single stanchion that's kept. Maybe in the drive aisles, those could be removed. Those are ones that get salvaged or repurposed. But the, the main ones, so you have that linear feel to the lot and you can, you know, okay, I see where the train sheds used to be. So that's kind of, I'll call that option A, which I've been proposing since December, really. And I thought that that'd be the easiest compromise for everybody. So then, a couple weeks ago at the HPC meeting, their thought would really be like an option B, which is keeping the actual train sheds with that 1980s glass skylights over top and making that really the grocery store, since that's the historic building. And as Mr. Rooney said, it is larger than, it's a little bit larger actual footprint on the site than the existing path mark building. But then, as Mr. Stolar was saying, you'd have parking kind of behind and in front of the building. And that might be problematic. Mr. Wince brought up that it would require some engineering and some waterproofing. Other people have proposed that possibly the skylights could be redone, raised up, adding more light, like a clear story to the building, that that'd be a possibility as well, to make it a little more inviting space. So that's, that's what I'd call option B.
And when you say.
Just for clarification purposes, when you say clear story, is that meaning that the, whatever the skylights are in would, would be the roof and the actual train sheds would not necessarily be the roof?
Either way, right. So possibly a larger roof above everything.
Above everything.
Or possibly just raising, so where the skylights are is actually in between where the waiting platforms used to be.
Right.
So maybe that could be even raised up even higher. Because obviously, the stanchions or columns where they are, they can't really be raised. I mean, they are what they are. So that would be like option B. And then there's an option C that's been discussed, which would be, you know, a little more ambitious, which would be keeping the supermarket where it's proposed now, 40,000-plus square feet, and then keeping some portion of the actual train sheds in front. So maybe you end up having an 80,000 or 90,000-square-foot supermarket, and this front area could be more like an Eastern Market or Quincy Market or Reading Market. And, you know, you could be like shopping and, you know, maybe even restaurant use in the front. Or like when you go to Whole Foods, you know, down in West Orange, where, you know, people sit in the front and they get coffee and they actually eat. And so maybe that, that skylight lit space could be possibly purpose for that. And then Mr. Stolar could still have the back grocery store where none of these columns or stanchions would be getting in the way of doing all the shelving and everything. And so that's, that's another reason why I reached out to the parking consultant to see if that, you know, is that even a possibility, so.
Can I just ask a question? You're saying expand the store?
Right.
Well, then what about the parking?
Well, that's, that's, that's the question.
Yeah, that one.
If there could be some type of shared parking, obviously, you're gonna lose parking and now the building is larger, more square feet. But it's possible, you know, maybe the front is open air. Maybe it's used for like a farmer market. So, you know, you have parking at some times and then you have, you know, it can be used during other months of the year, some type of a trade-off like that. So I call that like option C. So I think those are the three really only workable solutions in some form on the site.
Okay. And anything else to add about any of the comments that have been made about the process that you might want to address, or, you know, you're good with that? Everything, everything that you heard basically sounded accurate, or?
Like I said, I mean, you know, Mr. Stevie hasn't done any really new schemes in a couple months, really. We did most of that, and Mr. Stolar is right, back at the HPC. So really, what I was, what I've been given, you know, to look at, the renderings and designs have been, you know, December through about March. And then, you know, I don't, what is this, the third or fourth meeting we've been here, so.
So you're saying you've attempted to engage with the developer's architect, but they haven't tried to work through some of these alternate plans to accommodate? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying I've brought this, these issues up, yes. The other big issue I brought up to them was, if we don't do anything with, with the train shed restoration, was restoring the, the new retail facade on the eastern side facing the parking lot, so that we can mimic the historic train shed-looking side, you know, with the clay tile roof on that side, instead of the current proposal, which looks more like the new supermarket. So maybe the eastern side where the retail's gonna be underneath, this would be to the right of the Pig and Prince. East side?
The west side.
I think it is the Grove Street side of.
Yeah.
So between, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ross. It is between current Pig and Prince and new supermarket, that little stretch there.
So that's the west side of the.
But it's the, but it's the east face of it.
The east face of the west side.
Correct. The west side of the site, the eastern face. Right.
I believe I gave the board members copies of Barton's correspondence to Mr. Stevie.
Yes. So, and, and Mr. Chairman and members of board, so to that, we, the, Mr. Stevie, I believe, has testified at the last hearing regarding comments he received from the planning board at our first planning board hearing. And then with respect to Mr. Barton's, Mr. Ross's most recent suggestions, that's something that we plan to bring Mr. Stevie back to address.
Yes, I find it interesting. He's come up with three alternatives, you know, that maintain the, the historic building, right?
Well, I, I.
With, with problems.
Obviously, we're, in fairness, we're gonna consider them. I'm not sure that all three of them are actually viable, but.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Ross here?
So there was a point raised earlier about the insurability of the stanchions serving as light posts. Has there been any additional perspective on that, whether they actually would be insurable?
But just for the record, I never actually proposed they should be light fixtures. I don't think they're tall enough to actually serve that purpose. I think we were, we, when we talked about this many months ago, it was maybe that could be a secondary light source, but you're still gonna need your main lights to be able to, you know, provide the code required light levels for the parking lot.
In the exhibit we just saw, it seemed like they were being used as light fixtures.
That was an initial idea that I don't know was viable.
Right, okay. Understood.
I'm not a lighting expert.
No, right, understood.
So they could be supplemental decorative lights.
Yes. That is what they were proposing.
Right. Just to clarify, that, that was the direction we're probably going down, what Martin just said. Not necessarily replacing the amount of candle power that is needed per square foot under the regulations, although we are looking at actually having them made with the appropriate lighting and shields and so forth. But we're gonna look at all the different options.
Right, okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I'm looking, looking at the diagram that just was passed around. I was, I think visually cued more than in the past, sort of the fact that those metal expansions, that they seem to be pretty far out in front of where the existing store, which means that we're, we're pushing back the, the building more than I, I didn't realize we're pushing the building back quite that far. So I'm, I'm a little puzzled as to how much space there is between the parking lot with those expansions in them, and say where the Popeye and the, and the wall is now. Is that changed?
So where the, right, where the Popeyes and that wall is, I mean, that would be open through to the new store that they're proposing. These metal stanchions would just be still in place, though. So all the, the rest of the material will be gone. So you'd be able to see through. It's possible if there was a signage issue, they could even bring a sign out, you know, to the front of the stanchion. But, you know, if you look at their rendering of the parking lot, I mean, you can see the way it's proposed now, without that building there that we all know, you know, there's a lot of parking there in front of the building. And this is not really inhibiting on that, but it would cut down on a few parking spaces, because obviously where the columns are, you're not gonna be able to park. Those would have to be kind of, you know, partitioned off, or you just park next to them. It would have to be striped differently. But you're still gonna be able to see through and you'd see the building, the new building there. And it's the same building. It's the path mark. It's just all gonna be dressed up with their new architecture. Carol, were you asking how far back the new building will be from the current building?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. It's back further than I thought it was, looking at that.
Right. That's, that's what I was thinking you were asking. Mr. Troutner, Mr. Stolar, Mr. Stevie, does anybody have that number?
One second.
Thank you.
Also, there's a picture that depicts the current train sheds that gives you a good idea of what's gonna be demolished. And it's, seeing it visually, I don't know if you have that. It's an, one of the older pictures with an overview, overhead looking at the site. And that really gives you a real good idea about what they're tearing down here for parking.
Right.
I don't know if you have that.
I think the best thing that we should do, that we do it accurately, is when we come back with Mr. Stevie's response to Mr. Ross's last letter, as well as our historical consultant, we'll show you, because there are obviously different rows of these stanchions.
Yes.
Some of them are buried in the store, some of them in the front of the store. Some of them are in the front of the path mark. And I think, Carol, that's why it appears so hard to understand. So for us to try to pull out little pieces here, I think we'll just confuse more than we'll clarify. So next time, we'll bring a very clear representation. And if we can accommodate this option number one, which we also think is the most viable, we'll show where that would be and how that would relate to the original location. Or keep them, if there's a way to keep them, without changing the whole alignment of the drive aisles.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If I understood you correctly, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna bring back an historical preservation consultant to give testimony.
That's correct.
Okay. So with that, with that in mind, we do have a representative from the HPC here. And I'm sure that they'll want the opportunity to talk. And not just Steve, I mean, we have, we have another member of the HPC here in the audience, right? We don't have Ms. Bennett. She's not here. But I just wondered if either one of you want to say anything with respect to the HPC's comments in view of everything that's been said this evening?
Well, what we've talked about in HPC, especially at the last meeting, and David probably can corroborate with me, is that we want to keep the historical sheds, because those are the ones that are historic. Those are the ones that are listed locally, whereas the grocery store is not. And I think that we could probably work a way around this. I've been thinking about this and I've been thinking, this is like a third-year architectural design program. It's not a big deal. We can figure this out. What they have come up with, with adaptive reuse was actually pretty good. I just hope that we can keep as much of the, if not all, of the sheds as possible.
Do I need to be sworn in?
Yes, if you're gonna testify. Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm testimony about giving this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Kindly state your full name for the record. It's by your last name.
David Greenbaum, G-R-E-E-N-B-A-U-M, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. So just to concur with my colleague Steve Rooney, it was a unanimous decision by the Historic Preservation Commission. Each and every member present was adamantly insistent upon the preservation of the complete train sheds as they stand today. It was suggested that the adaptive reuse that was done in the 80s was a very thoughtful, well-conceived approach to preserving the train sheds, with the possible exception of looking at it from the idea of an internal mall of multiple tenants. And the opportunity that we identified is now, with a supermarket, a larger supermarket coming in, and with the possibility of reducing the existing supermarket space, which is not historic, we could, we suggested, I felt very strongly, that the train sheds with the enclosed atrium could actually be a very attractive feature, both for the purposes of preserving the actual train station, which for everybody's benefit was really the genesis of Montclair, New Jersey, public transportation, really stimulating the growth and development of Montclair, really the root of our city, of our town. And while the concept of the enclosures of the glass atriums might have not succeeded because there was a multi-tenant space by being a single-tenant space, and by making that into an area for congregation, for dining within the rest, within the supermarket, as pointed out, like Whole Foods in, in West Orange, it could be a tremendous asset. So the thing that I find very frustrating is that this is an asset to, I believe, an asset to a thoughtful, considerate food tenant, supermarket. So I thought, while I was listening today, Brian kept referring to these operators. And I keep picturing these people in these remote locations in their executive offices, and they have a certain footprint they have in mind, and they wanna plant that footprint wherever they go. And we've become, any town America, we're not any town America, we're Montclair, New Jersey, and people We're Montclair, New Jersey, and people choose to live here for a specific reason, many reasons, one of which is the uniqueness and the architectural integrity of the town and the thoughtfulness of its plan. And I would venture to ask Mr. Soler, have any of these operators actually visited the site and considered the possibility of the atrium and the enclosed train sheds as an asset? Has it been presented that way? Because you have to sell them, and I imagine that's the selling point.
I mean, with all due respect, of course, they've been there. We would have been, I think, pretty short-sighted to try to have a conversation on the phone. First of all, even, I didn't even realize that that was also part of your suggestion, having glass on top of the store. I mean, I don't know where the mechanicals go. That was not even something that...
Not above the main portion of the store. What I'm suggesting is the existing, what we suggested was that the existing train sheds, which presently are enclosed by glass...
But they're not, sir. What I'm trying to say to you, we talked about it, those were created in the 80s.
Absolutely.
There are no pieces of those that were here before.
And I want to correct...
They attached to pieces that were here before.
I hear you. I want to respectfully correct an assertion you made earlier. I don't believe anybody believed that those are, in fact, historical or original, the glass enclosures. What we were suggesting is that the glass enclosures were placed in the 1980s in a very thoughtful, sensitive way to preserve and maintain the architectural integrity and the historical importance of the train tracks. So, you have these peaks, a series of peaks. Anyone who's traveled to a European train station understands, you go into a space and there's, the trains all come in and there's a terminus, and there's open space or the glass enclosure. And there, the addition of the atrium showed to me a very respectful and thoughtful approach. And I think it will realize even in a better way with a single tenant and by having the storefront instead of being facing internally, as you pointed out, being externally. So, imagine if you will, most supermarkets have their produce in the front. Why couldn't the produce and perhaps the dining area, the eat-in or the prepared food section be under this glass atrium? This is a very civilized, very uplifting experience. And it occurs to me that this past week, I was a visitor to downtown Newark. I was very fortunate to have been given a tour of the Newark Public Library, and I challenged somebody to show me why Newark was cool today. And they took me over to the new Whole Foods, which is in the Haynes Building, and lo and behold, the entire space is glass enclosed with an atrium. And here, there is an example of somebody in this day and age, by choice, developed a property with a glass atrium as a means of creating a public space that's attractive, that really represents a tremendous renaissance in Newark, New Jersey. And they're potentially, one could argue, rising from a much greater deficit than we are. So, we already have the glass atrium, and I, we suggest, and the Historic Preservation Commission, absolutely unequivocally, the train station, train sheds are indeed part of the historical property. They're identified, I believe, in the national and the state designations. They must be preserved. Now, if this creates a problem for a tenant, that's unfortunate, and there needs to be some creative adaptive reuse. So, I would hope the planning board takes the HPC's very strong position and supports that position. And I don't think that it will be very much to the detriment of any tenant. And if so, let them come and seek a variance after, you know, then we should hear where their concerns are. I'm going to add one more point, and that is that this is a unique property because there's an entire site completely adjacent to this that is owned by the same landlord, same developer. And that would be the eastern lot of east of Grove Street. And lo and behold, there's a penetration. There's actually a passageway that connects the eastern lot or eastern parcel to the western parcel where the supermarket is, you know, most logically at this time, you know, going to be placed. Could that passageway provide access for parking and/or can it be potentially used for loading? Both of them, both uses could make use of that means of access from the eastern parcel. And I recognize that there's a major development for residential use, but again, this adds another opportunity to explore how that can be used as a means of connecting and providing access and parking to satisfy everybody's interests. So, just to reiterate, the position of the HPC is to preserve the train station, train sheds, and we want to honor and recognize that the atrium represents a very positive, attractive adaptive reuse that should likely be considered to be preserved. Thank you.
Mr. Rubacki. Good morning. I understand that you want to present some testimony this evening. Does it have to do with this whole HPC issue? Does it...
No, it has to do with parking and a particular aspect of parking that the reports that are reviewed online are not fully addressed.
Okay.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah.
Can I speak?
Well, I will, we're going to do some comments in a second here. We have some things, some business that we have to attend to as a board, so I have to reserve time at the end. But I'm getting ready to open this up to the public, Mr. Scott, and you can speak.
I would be very sure.
Soon as Mr. Rubacki's done. And then I'm going to open this up to the public to comment. I'm not going to limit your, whatever you want to say, I'm going to open it up to comment and questions, which is going to be a little bit unusual, but I will limit the amount of time because we do have to manage, we do have to manage some time, but I think we would all benefit in hearing some feedback. Since we've got a number of people in attendance, if you want to provide any feedback, I think we would benefit from hearing that. Mr. Rubacki?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony about giving this matters the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
I do.
Kindly state your full name for the records by your last name.
Frank Rubacki, R-U-B-A-C-K-Y.
All right.
With your permission, I'd like to give you a handout.
Yeah, I will now show up first to counsel and see if he's got an objection.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, so I don't want to be difficult, obviously, and I don't want to restrict Mr. Rubacki's ability to comment, but what's been presented in front of me, and again, it's rather detailed, suggests that this is a professional expert parking analysis, which obviously I, you know, is issue one. We're certainly not prepared to rebut this. And secondly, and with all due respect to Mr. Rubacki, and maybe he is, and I'm not aware of it, but I'm not sure that he's a qualified parking expert in order to address shared parking analysis in this level of detail.
Mr. Rubacki, are you presenting a third-party's report?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I note your objection. Let's see where he goes with this. And of course, you're free to raise it again.
I would say at this point, let's not put the report in evidence. Let's at least give their traffic expert an opportunity to take a look at it. But why don't you give the board a general flavor for what you're concerned about?
Because we're not presenting, he's not presenting that testimony this evening. So, do you want to, or do you want to come back at the next meeting when they've had a chance to review it and then do it then? It's up to you.
I would, the only reason that I would do it out of order, because I understand that the reports haven't been presented at a hearing, is to not delay this process further because I'm taking...
You're not going to delay it any further, believe me, because we're definitely coming back. They're presenting multiple witnesses. We have public comment to take on this. And then, like I said, I'm going to have to cut that off depending on how many people want to talk, because I have to manage the time here because we have something that we have a time limit to review. So, we only have, we only have a certain amount of time for that, that public input. So, you're not going to be delaying it if we wait until next time.
Okay. Well, then, if I could just take one minute just to explain generally what I'm approaching this as?
And then you want to come back at the next and actually present full testimony, and that way you can have an opportunity to address whatever's in the report or whatever you're...
Can I ask that our parking expert have a copy of it as well so that...
But of course, but of course.
Jerry, Jerry.
So, is Mr. Rubacki acting as a member of the public?
Mr. Rubacki is acting as a member of the public who is presenting opposition and providing testimony.
Yeah.
Because he's not, he's not, he's not actually a party, too.
I'm not opposing the...
We're going to make you a neighbor right now. We're just going to say he's providing neighborly comment.
Right.
And at this point, we're not going to go to the extent of accepting the report. We're going to let our pros take a look at something that seems a little bigger. Let him just give you his concept and see if it's something that throws into the mix with the things you're talking about tonight. And if you can keep it under, you know, 90 seconds, we'll be doing great.
Okay. Well, that sounds like a good call. As far as the neighborly part, very quickly, I have 20 years of retail experience at the executive level, and what I was going to speak to is the seasonality of parking demand. Essentially, my testimony would be to two questions. One, does SX excess parking capacity detract from the township's land use objectives, and should it be considered a detriment of a certain level? In other words, can you have too much parking? That would be one question or one theme of my testimony. And the second one is, do we have the right model for this application? And I was, my analysis of the tests, of the reports submitted, I'm not really breaking any new ground here, I'm using either the reports submitted or ULI, ISCC information to simply say there's a seasonality of demand. And when you look at the seasonality of the demand over a year, it's very interesting and thought-provoking. And the reports that we typically present, are presented to the planning board, only have the peak month, the peak hour, the peak month, the peak month, hour, day, and month. That's generally what you see in your report, and I want to expand upon that. So, that's really what my testimony is going to be about.
Just for clarification, are you alluding to the fact that there may be too much parking being requested by the applicant? Is that what you're saying here?
Yeah, I'm saying that there's a significant surplus parking that's a detriment.
Ah. And your report, of course, elaborates on what you've, what you've just handed out, elaborates on that?
Yes, the report was developed to address those two questions, and I'm using existing data or ULI data.
All right. So, we'll, then we'll expect to see you at the next meeting, and we'll, everybody will redo your report?
I'll check my schedule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I make the 90 seconds?
Oh, you did. You did great.
All right. Now, I'd like to open this up to the public. Come on up, Mr. Scott.
Can I just ask a question to Mr. Greenbaum?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I had a, I'm sorry, Mr. Scott, I just want to ask Mr. Greenbaum a question. The, as this process has been going along over, you know, a great many, many months, and the HPC has met with the developers and you've, and you've met amongst yourselves, all of the historic elements of the, of the property, the horse trow, the steps, that was all talked about at length and all incorporated into, into the design and the steel stanchions. When, when did it come up that, on your radar, about the train sheds? Has that always been on the table?
Absolutely. The train sheds have never been off the table. I think there was a period of time between the last two meetings where, where we realized that the removal of the front section of the store, we weren't fully aware of what the loss factor would be, and we went on-site, walked the site, and really took an inventory, and we recognized what would be lost. And we realized that, while they did a very good job, Mr. Stevie did a very good job from an aesthetic point of view, and they made a very gallant effort, there really wasn't any sacrifice made to preserve, there was, there was an imposition and an encroachment on the historical assets of the property more than we recognized initially, and that is why I believe our chairperson insisted that we discuss, and we all agreed, that it needed to be revisited.
But when did you take that walk? Was just a few weeks ago?
We've taken multiple walks, but we walked, and we actually had access. The security guards on the property actually, hopefully this is acceptable, but gave us access to walk around parts of the old path mark.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
We have pictures.
I don't, it just seemed to me, and with all due respect, that things where we had plan, there's plans, there's extensive plans, and then, and then this, for lack of a better word, a wrench got thrown into everything in the last six weeks, four weeks, and...
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
The thing is, is it was never presented to us where the existing train shed was. It was always taken away. Every single design...
For the record, just as the applicant, we have to respectfully agree to disagree, and there are transcripts of the HPC hearings.
No, 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 there is, but it was never...
I mean, it's, I don't want to fight about it, but I just need to make it clear in the record.
It was never shown where the train sheds were and how much area it was until Mr. Rubacki came up and put things up on the meeting, and we started looking at it and looking at it from the drone shot.
From a functional standpoint, Counselor, I can understand the concern because it, it did seem to come out of left field.
Yes.
But the reality is that these, these projects are complicated and difficult, and sometimes when presented visually with lots of plans, bodies focus on particular things, and it's hard to sometimes realize what's coming at you or what is there or what isn't. So, it's not uncommon that something like this gets missed and then picked up later. It was presented early on that this was a need, but, but then kind of, you know, dropped a little bit for, for a period of time. So, you're absolutely correct that, you know, it has created issues down the road, but it was always on the table and always there. That's the, that's the point. To me, the issue is what do we do about it? And I think we heard from some experts options to, to address the issues, and that seems to be the charge of the board now, what to preserve and what can adaptively be reused. So, I think that's the challenge for us right now.
I just want to add, it's important to recognize that right now, we're focusing on the, the supermarket site or the existing train shed site. But you have to understand that the package of the, the presentation or the application also included the property on the, and the whole residential development on the eastern parcel. So, we're looking at many moving parts in the course of these meetings. And so, sometimes what we find is the applicants oftentimes are focusing your attention here, and sometimes things over here aren't really, they're kind of being hidden and buried. And sometimes we have to come back...
Again, for the record, I got to respectfully just assert an objection that there's no attempt to misguided...
All right, and if I can, if I can just say, I think we, we recognize that there's a difference of opinion here.
Yeah.
This is the same discussion that we had at the last meeting. And I will allow each individual to draw their own conclusion about how they feel about it. I think it's, and I don't think we're, we're being productive in discussing it any further. The fact of the matter is, we have to deal with it right now.
Absolutely.
And with that said, Mr. Scott, you have a comment to, to make about what we're talking about this evening? Or do you want to change the topic and talk about something completely different, which I really don't want to venture into this evening?
Well, I definitely don't, I definitely don't want to change the topic. I just want to make sure for the record that we, we understand that we're looking at a development project that has started...
Mr. Scott, you're going to testify, right?
Yes, I am.
Raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear a firm testimony about giving this...
Do you swear a firm testimony about giving this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. What's your last name?
S C O T T. William Scott. I'm also the co-chair of the Montclair Housing Commission, and also the chair of the Montclair N W A C P Housing Committee.
Okay.
Okay? And a lifelong resident of Montclair for 68 years, okay? And I just wanna make sure that we understand what's been occurring in not only the fourth ward, but the third ward. And as it relates to supermarkets in that particular area, the fourth ward, we've probably lost about four to five supermarkets over the last 50 years. And unfortunately, there were some issues with the path mark supermarket, but one thing we knew, we had a supermarket. For whatever reason, the path mark going out of business, right now, we're standing here and we're debating whether we're going to have a supermarket four years into this conversation. I just wanna make sure for the record, you know, we absolutely feel mistreated from the standpoint if a supermarket could have been put in place in Upper Montclair within a two-week period of time, while we're continuing to have this conversation four years later, a supermarket in the Lackawanna Plaza development. My understanding, it's going to be moving forward, but I took the opportunity to listen to the HPC meeting, this past, the 26th of April, and there were some significant recommendations that absolutely would pretty much kill this project. And one of those recommendations was the fact that they wanted to, consideration, much consideration was given to demolishing the current supermarket, putting the onus on the developer to move it somewhere else in the project at just a whim. I mean, I would think that someone would consider, when you make that kind of a recommendation, you're talking in terms of tens of millions of dollars that you're pushing onto the developer. And I would venture to think, at this late point in time, a developer would not even consider demolishing a supermarket and constructing a new supermarket, it's just not in his financial capability. So that means we would lose the entire project, not only the supermarket, the affordable housing aspect of this project, which is 31 affordable units, 124 market rate units, the revitalization of a badly needed area within the township of Montclair. I mean, I just really, when I listened to that meeting, the historical preservation meeting, you know, recommendations were put out on the table, put a 15,000 square foot seating area in the middle of a parking deck to face Bloomfield Avenue to take a look at the traffic. That was ridiculous. Another recommendation was to possibly create an antique open house marketplace, where people could bring their antique equipment from the township of Montclair and sell antique equipment. Not once did I hear, from a historical preservation standpoint, the preservation of a community. I only heard a building. This was absolutely absurd. And I didn't really want to come up here and get emotional about this, but, you know, we've been dealing with being treated like second-class citizens in this township. And we're not gonna accept it anymore. This project has to move forward. I support the project. 100-year-old sheds, they're nice, but they don't bring a supermarket to the community, they don't bring an economic enhancement to the community, they don't bring housing to the community. And I think at this point in time, we better start thinking about what's good for people, not sheds, not concrete pillars, okay? This is something that I think we really, really, from a moral standpoint, we need to move this project forward. Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard? Mr. Rabaki.
You know what, that's probably not a...
We're not, you know, Counselor, I wasn't intending to take testimony here. This was, I called specifically for comment and questions about what we've been discussing this evening. And yeah, this is a little unusual, but this is not your ordinary run-of-the-mill application either.
I'm just asking questions. Do I have a piece?
No, you're still in the room. No, no. I just have a rule against hoozies. That's all.
Mr. Stoller, could you clarify? You had mentioned that the market trend in supermarket size was one of polarity, they were going, either getting smaller or getting larger. Could you quantify that a little bit? And the second part of the question is, as a scenario that the planning board might see, besides no supermarket or a supermarket, could there be a different-sized supermarket than what you're proposing?
Yes, an alternative to a supermarket is a market that is not a supermarket, that is a small market, similar to like Aldi's that you've seen in Bloomfield, I think it's about 10,000 square feet. Trader Joe's is, I think, around 14 or 15. There's even the possibility of a unique operator of their own in that small size. But it's somewhat in that size or as large as they can make them. They're not interested anymore in that middle point.
So it's safe to say it's kind of like under 25,000 and over 50,000, 60,000 seems to be?
I guess that's a fair point.
Yeah. I'm not trying to pin you down, just sense...
As much as we know, yes.
Okay. And the second question leverages off Mr. Greenbaum's comment about the passageway and your prior testimony about, I believe it's gonna be used for residential and maybe certain employees to use from the east parcel to the west parcel. And my question is really about easements. So there's an easement there, and I want to understand any kind of definition of the easement as far as what it could be used for and what it could not be used for, vis-à-vis the public versus private, public versus just pure private.
Well, maybe we'll split this between the two of us. I'm not gonna speak to the legalities, but I will speak to Mr. Greenbaum's suggestion that we load food, produce, and other product into a residential building and somehow have it, carted through a pedestrian walkway into a store is not something that we think would work.
That was not the nature of my question.
Oh, but you said in connection with his point.
With the idea of the penetration of the two lots.
Yeah.
That was the extent of the connection. I'm sorry.
We don't think that works.
My mistake. I'm talking about whether this could be an open public access versus a restricted access. And does the easement speak to that in any way?
So my understanding is that there's a recorded map which reflects the existence of an easement in favor of our predecessor title, as owning both sides. Biped by Grove Street, the easement is for pedestrian easement in favor of our predecessor title crossing Grove, but I will confess, actually, as of this moment, I do have a copy of the easement. It's not recorded with title, or at least not easily accessible. So we're still working on that. So...
So we don't know what the easement conditions were that were granted?
Yeah, I have suspicion, but I'd be offering you suspicion.
And just one other question, so a little bit, I'm sorry. The right-of-the-roadway reservation, is this application asking for any relief from that?
When you say the...
The 10-foot roadway reservation on Bloomfield Avenue that intrudes on the site.
Well, we've never testified that we're asking for anything from the county.
No, I didn't think you had. I was just...
We've already met with the county. The county's very, very pleased with the plan as it is.
Okay. So there's the roadway, you're not asking for the roadway reservation to go away?
No.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Speak now or forever hold your peace. I don't really mean that literally. I mean that for, I mean that for this evening.
I'm James Cotter. I represent the Cloverhill Grove Terrace Neighborhood Association. I have a quick point of clarification for the chairman. Is this the first opportunity for public comment, and will this be the only opportunity for public comment on the entirety of the plan?
Up to this point, we've only allowed questions, and normally that's our procedure. But because of the nature of this impasse that we've arrived at, we've kind of taken a side jog. And given the amount of people who've showed up this evening, I wanted to provide the opportunity to get some feedback on this particular issue this evening, if any members of the public were willing to give that feedback. So I didn't want to restrict it to just questions with respect to what was testified about this evening, but also take comment on that issue also.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman...
And there will be opportunity for comment on the overall application, and that I would like to keep for the end where it normally is, after all of the testimony is in and all the presentation is in, then for a comment based on all of the information that will be presented.
Will there still be an opportunity then to remediate issues that we bring up from the neighborhood at that late date?
It depends...
The reason I'm asking is Counselor Slager and others strike me as eager to move this forward, and we're eager to move it forward as well. However, we have issues that are germane to the people who live in the shadow of this development that are gonna need to be addressed, not at the 11th hour, but in the heart of the matter.
Well, if the applicant does not present any evidence or testimony that addresses those issues, and your organization wants to present opposition based on those issues, you are entitled to present that opposition, you know, and subject yourself to giving testimony and to giving cross-examination. If you want to present that issue in the form of a comment, then basically you leave it to the board to determine whether or not it accepts those issues, whether those issues are pertinent to the application, whether those issues need to be addressed, or are basically expressions of self-interest, which we get often, as you can imagine. So you do leave it, and at the end of the day, quite frankly, you know, those are determinations that the board has to make anyway.
Okay.
But presenting, giving formal testimony and presenting evidence, you know, gives you the opportunity to present a more detailed discussion, but it also subjects you to cross-examination, whereas presenting a comment is not something that's cross-examining, it's your opinion.
Understood.
Counselor, you wanna...
Well, I have a thought. Yes. Sorry. The thought is, could you... You read my mind. Yes. Yes. At the end, we're gonna obviously continue. I don't even think we know what, we're not really sure about this project. It's still percolating as opposed to...
We still have, we still have more testimony.
So you could talk to them and express your concerns, and maybe things could be worked out without involving the board, and changes could be made to the plan that'll be satisfactory to you. And if not, then you can at least say that you tried and...
Particularly if you're addressing things other than the historic preservation issue that we've been discussing this evening.
Yes, we are, pedestrian safety, quality of life. What you might see is NIMBY is very important to the people...
Well, no, no, wait, wait, wait. Back up, back up, back up. We don't, pedestrian safety is not...
Pedestrian safety, traffic flow...
Sure, all of that is stuff that we routinely...
Some assertions that the developer made that we're still waiting for answers on, points of aggression through the tunnel, you know, points of aggression into the site that are going to negatively impact the people who live in the region.
Again, we haven't had traffic testimony, we haven't basically had the last word on any of those issues. Those are issues that are, we recognize are town issues, they're not backyard issues. So, you know, I wouldn't characterize them as that.
Okay.
But again, I think the suggestion that you talk to the applicant's counsel and get a better handle on what actually are the issues that you need to address with us would be in everybody's interest.
Okay. We're also looking for advocacy on the behalf, we're looking for advocacy from you, you're our planning board. That's essentially what we're hoping for. But to the issue at hand, I concur with Mr. Scott, the pursuit of a supermarket is desperately needed for the fourth ward. I don't want that to trump, however, the thoughtful way in which the HPC is seeking to maintain the integrity of the historic site. It strikes me, and it strikes the people of my neighborhood association, that there's a distinct lack of imagination in this plan. You know, the notion that, you know, we would destroy a train shed for parking just seems antithetical to the very essence of what historic preservation is. It runs counter to the notion of a walkable suburb, it's not in keeping with the values of Montclair, nor the opportunities for the site. And so we're hoping that you will heed the recommendations of the HPC. Thank you.
So David, are you gonna give, are you going to repeat any, what you have already stated to us? Because I gave you a specific platform to express what you needed to express. This is for the public.
Okay. So one thing I just wanted to add from the HPC...
But, fine, but you should have, you should have said that on behalf of the HPC, when you had the platform, you're impinging upon the public's time now.
Okay.
So please be quick about it.
In addition to the things that we discussed earlier, we did talk in the HPC about the importance of activating the Glen Ridge Avenue side of the parcel and making sure that there's a very thoughtful, considered plan to making that corner of Grove Street and Glen Ridge Avenue and the northern facade of this project, somewhere or another inviting and welcoming and activating to this intersection, this particular area, so it's not just a dead zone, so that Glen Ridge can become a more vibrant, activated section of this project. And the only other thing I want to say is that I don't think anyone has to look at the HPC's position as antithetical or counter to the need for supermarket in this district. No one's contesting that. So I just want to make it clear that there's not a dialectic of one or the other, we're all on the same page here. We want the same things. I think the last speaker's...
This is not, okay, this is not rebuttal, okay?
His last point was, there needs to be more creativity in thinking and consideration.
Thanks. Other members of the public.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear a firm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Say your full name for the record, swear your last name.
Lysanne Renner, R E N N E R.
Okay. And your street address?
42 Godfrey Road.
Okay.
Yeah. I just was sensing that there is a bit of a false dichotomy between, you know, historic preservation versus a grocery store. We can clearly have both, we already have had both. And I think it would be a shame to allow the demolition of this historic building and then perhaps find out, after we've demolished it, that there isn't gonna be a grocery store after all, because they couldn't get someone to sign a lease. So I don't think you want to give away your historic asset for something that could be a pig and a poke, or something that's definitely not definite. I also just want to point out the historic preservation element of the master plan and its goals and objectives on historic preservation.
Well, we are aware of those.
I know you are.
We wrote them.
I know you did.
You don't have to, you don't have to read them back to us.
All right. So I just want them to be very prominent in the discussion.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Other members of the public who would like to be heard?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, but I hope to just ask questions, not testimony.
Okay, go ahead, far away.
If we could put up the engineer's drawing of the truck articulation, and I understand you're gonna have traffic engineer parking in the light, so be a brief...
Just to be clear, Kerry, we don't have the final details, like dumpster locations and so forth.
Yeah, so anything of that sort that would be on a subsequent meeting, I won't keep you from your business. Truck articulation, it's a very varied art and science. Milburn, for those who are aware and here with me, Counselor, just for a moment as I preempt the question. Intersections of Milburn and Main were grossly misrepresented, and Mr. Watkins certainly was the engineer at the time, not his fault. Things aren't always as they appear to be. I just want to know if the traffic engineer for the town will also do a review of the articulation to make sure that those trucks do and are able to get in and out as they're presented?
I believe we have our board engineer here, who's been reviewing the plans to document the...
I don't necessarily need that answer tonight, if that's going to be part of the next meeting. I'm not looking to say it's wrong, I just want to know that someone confirms that it's correct.
Mr. Fisher.
Sure, please.
Joe Fisher with NV5, the board's traffic consultant. We will be reviewing these documents, we haven't seen these yet, these were just presented today. I've seen them for about as long as you have, so, but yes, we will be reviewing this as well to make sure that what they're representing is correct.
As part of that, the smaller trucks, and I know Brian and Hampshire, and they're doing a terrific job in the redesign and getting the trucks primarily off Glen Ridge Avenue, I think it's better for the streets, it's helpful to us. As part of any testimony that may come from consultant, or supermarket, or applicant of the small trucks, there's a larger amount of area now, Mr. Wynn, as I know you're familiar, they're pushing back portion of the building, you're looking to perhaps have them redesign a straighter line along Glen Ridge Avenue. There's more surface area, again, there's going to be small trucks, contractors are not as grown, as Brian said, dumpsters and other things of the sort. Just want to question, you'll certainly review all those sorts of things, and any traffic counts, number of trucks, and I know one doesn't know, but there is supermarket data out there as to whether, question that didn't come up today, and I'd like to ask the question again, if the applicant at a subsequent time would be able to offer whether the large trucks could come at non-busy, non-prime time hours. So a question for you, if that's something that'd be part of your review.
We'll look, we have looked at the traffic study, and we've gone back and forth, most of that in written correspondence at length. As far as reviewing the smaller trucks, we typically take a look at a single unit truck as well. Again, I haven't, I haven't been able to get the templates out and put them on these plans yet, but we will do that. And as far as the, as I said, as far as the traffic numbers, we have been going back and forth with the applicant at length. I'm not going to quote every item in my comment letters, they've been rather extensive, nine, 10-page letters long, so we are looking at a lot of the detailed numbers, it just hasn't all been presented in testimony to the board.
And then I think lastly, and part of what you'll offer in terms of the larger apron, I'm sure we've all been at the post office, the buildings are there, my building got a variance, they're there, they have to be reused. I raised the possibility of a crosswalk, some said no. That hundred-and-some-odd-foot apron, the amount of people passing through our parking lot, cutting through and toward the post office, and it's becoming a very walkable area, I express a concern if we're not going to put an island, which is there now for the driveways, and the way they're going to articulate the vehicles is historically the way that it always was done with a larger area, if the island is not going to remain similar to Park Avenue in New York City for a large crossing distance, that something to be contemplated, please, is part of what you're going to do to get across what I'll call the divide, Hudson River, we have to get either across that driveway or to get across Glen Ridge Avenue. I was just asking, please.
Just say thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you. And I think, and just Snow, if that would be looked at again, Brian, I don't know if that's, this is your part of the insurance, your concern is, Joe. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to make a comment or ask a question? Another bite at the apple, Mr. Scott?
Everybody else seems to be getting extra bites, so I might as well take mine too. I just wanted to pose a possible question to Mr. Stoller. If your project moves forward with its current configuration, would you consider the construction from a priority standpoint of the supermarket first within your project?
I don't think we could really speak intelligently to that now, because so much of a mixed-use project, we've done a lot of mixed-use projects, is probably what our main focus is.
But not to interrupt you, just to take a step back and take a look at it from a timing standpoint, you know, because as I mentioned, you know, we've been looking at this situation for over four years, and, you know, you're probably, I can't tell you when you're going to be breaking ground, but this, you know, that could be something that's two, three, four years out, and, you know...
We hope not.
I hope not either, okay, but now you can see where I would like to see a priority possibly put on the development of the supermarket, if possible, just something to consider.
Mr. Scott, we absolutely recognize the importance of that from a public perspective, it's just that we can't know right this moment that we could say, yeah, we'll do that, and then find out that from a development perspective of going through all the steps that it takes to do, that it's very difficult. I don't have any reason to believe it is, I just can't give you an exact right now, but we'll definitely try to make it a priority.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we need to schedule another date to continue this. So what does it look like, Janice?
June 11th.
June 11th, do we have anything else on that evening?
Two fifty-six parks on for that night as well, if we continued it to that night. So...
How many?
That's Obachan Plaza.
Yeah.
So if it's not June 11th, we also have, the date after that would be June 25th.
That's a problem for me. I don't know. I really don't know.
We didn't have parking, right?
Is it possible to be on to a different day? Because we're here, we have nothing here, and we're both here.
You mean the 29th of this month?
Yes.
That's Memorial Day?
Memorial is 28th.
Possible to be on another night other than Monday? The week of the 28th?
What's the, what's the...
We always reschedule it for the 21st, I canceled that, I just put it back on the agenda.
I'm not going to be here.
It's the next Monday.
And I'll have difficulty on that Monday as well.
Yeah, I won't be here. I've got to, I'll be out of town.
The 27th and 28th are good for me in June.
What about...
What about the, what's the following Monday after the 11th?
The 18th. You want to change 25th to 18th?
How about the 18th?
That would actually work for me, because I'm supposed to be away on the 25th.
Then let's do the 18th.
I think that makes sense.
Let's do the 18th.
What about this?
That's Memorial Day weekend, and that's, that's, people are, you know, people will come, people will be...
So June, June 25th is now June 18th meeting?
Yeah, we'll cancel the 25th and schedule especially maybe on the 18th. Is that okay?
That works, and my assumption is there's, that it would probably just be us on that agenda, or...
Yes.
Not to be presumptuous, but...
It would just be June 18th.
Yes.
June 18th.
We don't have a meeting on the 21st now?
Correct.
If we have a meeting on the 21st, our next...
We have no meeting next week.
June 11th is the next meeting.
Right.
The Park Street application, 256 Park Street, and this will be carried to the 18th.
All right, June 18th?
Right.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Yes, yes.
I would presume so.
Yes.
It's the plan.
Do we need to take a break now?
We could.
Okay, we're going to do, we're going to do five minutes.
Five, yeah.
Five-minute break.
The next thing on our agenda is we have a referral from the Township Council for an ordinance, affordable housing.
Oh, yes.
And Mr. Scott left.
We didn't know what it was about.
He was all caught up. It was on the agenda, and you know Mr. Scott reads the agendas.
Yeah, absolutely.
The council introduced some changes for affordable housing ordinances in an attempt to make them current because they refer to the Council on Affordable Housing, which has no longer been existing. We've had some longstanding inconsistencies between our affordable housing requirements in the zoning ordinance and our affordable housing requirements in the Affordable Housing Chapter, which is Chapter 65. So, in an effort to ensure that our affordable housing ordinances remain enforceable, these changes were made.
So, we're basically cleaning up the...
Right. The one thing that's new is it gives us the ability or the power to invoke a local preference. So, that's the only deviation. But it's something we've been talking about.
Well, everybody seems to be in favor of that, because we have been talking about it for a long time.
...in terms of affordable housing, and that's the direction that they're going. So, I think it's a really good thing.
Janice, I've read that council proposal three times. Actually, I read in the paper a couple of times. I read the...I'm still somewhat confused, I'm not embarrassed to say. Could you just refine all of the points of the existing law for everybody here? Are we adhering to 20%, and it's being split how? What?
We're adhering to 20%. That hasn't changed. It's the 10% low, the 10% mod, that hasn't changed. The...
Have you changed any of the requirements?
No, because what we do is we...what's still in effect is called the Uniform Housing...
I'm sorry, thank you. The Uniform Housing Affordability Controls, the UHAC regulations at the state level, have not changed as a result of the affordable housing litigation. That still remains in effect, and we still reflect that. The only difference is, in terms of affirmative marketing, is we are putting that local preference in.
And can you define that exactly, please?
I can't define it exactly because it's not defined in...it gives us the ability to add a local preference. Residents of Montclair...I can't define what a resident of Montclair is because that's not defined in the ordinance.
Yet, but it allows for it to be...
It allows for, I think it was a marketing plan, right, to be developed to get some preference.
It always required a marketing plan.
Right.
But now, the marketing plan can include a local preference in.
Right.
And that gives us some latitude in how to define what that local preference is. What is a resident of Montclair?
And it doesn't require it, but it allows it.
Right.
Right, and we're not defining it specifically. It's for whomever develops this marketing plan to decide.
But I'm sorry, I thought the local preference was for teachers, I guess, and employees of the township.
That's how it's been discussed, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the only definition that you could come up with.
That's workforce housing.
Right.
That's called workforce...
That's workforce housing, but that's what's in here, right?
No, just a preference.
It's two different things.
Right. The actual preference, local preference, is not here. What this allows the marketing plan to establish a preference and to define what that preference is.
On a per-project basis?
Right, on a...on a per-project, on a per-project basis, yes.
No, I don't think...I think it should be, you know, when you have a, when you have a local preference, it should be...
Well, it would be inconsistent if you had it.
Consistent among projects.
Right. And it also, also, who is, who makes the decision about whether or not there's going to be a preference built into the plan? There he is. We've been waiting for you, Mr. Scott. But, again, who, who's, who makes that determination?
I don't have the answer. I believe it's the council.
That would be logic.
It's going to be a, whatever the city ordinance says something about their appointment of the person who's going to be the housing guy.
I'm the appointed municipal housing liaison, that's me. We have an administrative agent who administers our programs. There's no new...
Hold on, isn't there also...
That's in there right now. That's always been in there.
I thought it was new language, but the way it seems to be, it's been inserted in here.
Which section? If you give me a page, I'll let you know.
If they had been moved from some other place or reworded.
Isn't there also language now that the off-site option and that it now requires effectively three bodies to approve that on a per-project basis? The Planning Board, the Council, and the Housing Commission?
I don't, I don't see that.
I read that in the paper as well.
I think we need to really look at this closely because we certainly have different opinions.
In the paper or in the resolution? And I'm curious about some of the...
Here's the thing.
You have until...
Can I have the law? Does someone provide me the law so I can take a quick look at it? Like what the governing body forwarded to us? This is your whole ordinance.
It's the...no, it's just the inclusionary ordinance. It's Chapter 65, basically in its entirety.
And we have a time limit on this. Why we have to hear this this evening is because if we don't, we don't have a meeting scheduled before our responses due back to the council.
What I'm trying to...oh, God, help me.
Oh, sorry. But it says here on Janet's memo that the board's comments are due to the governing body by June 4th, but then it says that they're voting on it on May 22nd. In your, in your actual resolution, the tail end of the resolution, the last paragraph says something that the council will be...
I don't have any control over what...
Oh, that's what they wrote, okay.
I don't write the resolution.
Yeah, it's...
I'm curious as to what exactly we're asked to approve. Are we going...there's a lot of details in this.
You're not asked, you're asked for your recommendation in terms of its consistency with the master plan.
Correct.
Well, one of the things I'm looking, one of the things I'm looking at is that there's a lot of detail in here about how these programs are going to attract additions to the commitment to provide affordable housing. And I look at the various sections. I look, I'll just take an example on page nine, which is not numbered, but you have to count through.
Yeah, not number one.
Section E, voluntary extension of affordability controls.
That's an existing program. There's no changes to it.
So, we're not going to do, we're not approving, and we're not saying that we should continue this. We're not giving any opinion about these barriers.
Those are exist...essentially, that hasn't changed. That's an existing program. We've been implementing it for years, okay? I think what you need to focus on are the additions and the deletions.
Okay, but here's my question, okay? All of this may be existing, but are we, in our action, commenting that that's okay by just leaving it alone? Or what is it that we are approving on?
Yeah, that's a good question.
We're, we're, I think specifically, we are approving whether the changes that are being made are consistent with the master plan. And if we have any other comments that we feel are appropriate, we have always taken the opportunity to add those comments in when we've been asked for our, when our position from the council on whether there's consistency with the master plan.
And let me go to your point. The section on 65-4, Affordable Housing Administration, it looks like it's new. We just moved it.
Oh, so that's why it's...
It was in a different section. It didn't make any sense where it was. It said it should be moved here, so...
And, and I think, Janice, comments from the beginning was that the view, this whole amendment is being done to clean up out-of-date references and things that don't apply anymore. It wasn't a rewrite of the plan. The only thing that's different was the option to add the local preference, which had been a topic, but that was the only effort that was made.
Something new, yeah.
Right, and if the, if there are items in here that you think also need to be reviewed, that could be an additional comment. And that, you know, we're okay with the changes that have been made so far, but this can be fur...this isn't, in other words, the only amendment that could be made to this ordinance, but this is all that the council wanted to do at this particular time.
Okay, but I do have the question, though. It says right on Janet's memo that we have until June 4th, but on the other hand, on the last page of the ordinance 65 change, it says that the regular meeting on May 22nd, at which time the Township Council meet and to final, consider final action. So, which is it, May 22nd or June 4th?
Janice?
Well, I can say this. From the first reading of the ordinance, you have 45 days to make a comment. And normally, governing bodies want us to make a comment as soon as possible, and I don't know when they're meeting.
Well, I was going to say, there is no meeting on June 4th. The next, that's a Monday.
Okay, but...
That was just the, when I added the number of days, that was...
Oh, okay. So, you're saying referral.
This is our resolution. This is what we approved tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, tonight is when we're supposed to give them...
Well, this is, this is the only meeting that we have.
Right, okay.
The last meeting that we have before the end of the 45 days.
Another comment is there's many references to COA still in the ordinance. They didn't take them all out. Is that you?
It was, I didn't do it.
And I have another question.
There was a... And that should be, and if it's appropriate for them to come out, that should be part of our recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be reviewed for this.
Yes.
There was a particular ruling in one other municipality that I read in the planning memo that, you know...
I'm aware of it.
Does that impact this at all?
No, because Montclair is one of the, you're one of the, you're one of the exempt communities, I'm pretty sure, so...
But we pulled out of the declaratory judgment action. Our number is zero, and I think what we're...
What does that mean? What does that mean, our number?
Our number, because we are an urban aid municipality, we essentially have a calculated zero obligation for affordable housing. And yet, the council and the community, we are continuing to...
Feel that there's a need for additional affordable housing.
Yeah, we know that there's a need. So, I think the decision is, it's still important, but we're going to do it in our own way.
So, so just to be clear, we have a legal obligation of zero, but we have, as a policy, as a community and a body, made a decision to continue the 20%. Is that what you're saying?
Because that's simply a calculation because we meet the definition of an urban aid municipality, which under...
So, artificial definition.
Under the Affordable Housing Regulations, we technically have a zero obligation, but we know that there's a need. We recognize that there's a need.
I just wanted to clarify.
That's it.
So, you're correct.
So, the communities who do have a need, they have to pay attention to that case in Mercer County.
Got it.
And they are. They are. There's 365 of them that are, that are bumping along, doing what they have to do on that, but we're not one of those 365.
And could you just explain why or how we've met our legal obligation already and thus are at zero, just for clarification?
Again, because we're an urban aid municipality, our new construction obligation is zero, so we don't have to prove to anybody that we're meeting some requirement.
Urban aid communities are exempt from COA. They were always exempt from COA.
But we, you know, we have a very active housing commission, and we know that there is affordable, housing affordability is an issue, so we are committed to continuing to address affordable housing in our own manner.
I'm not disputing the, the act or the policy. I was just trying to clarify the distinction between the legal obligation and what we have decided to do as a community.
And I, and let me just point out, when you say legal, there's, there's still a fair share housing, the Fair Housing Act, so we're trying to implement the spirit of the Fair Housing Act, even if according to New Jersey Affordable Housing Regulations, we don't have to. So, I, there, I think you have to look, there's both...
That's another component of it.
Listen, even on the fly, I can tell you that we could run afoul of either of the stakeholders in this. A builder could object to the 20% set aside, and fair share might determine that Montclair becomes such a bright star at some point that we should be providing more. I don't know. We'll have to see how the future goes.
But we've, the town has made a...
We need to clear up this ordinance so it's not...
The town has made a decision, a commitment to affordable housing.
Well, we're maintaining our commitment.
Right.
We're maintaining our policy of 20%.
Which is what we've been doing despite whatever the state has chosen.
And that's what leads to us being designated an urban aid area?
It's our density.
Our density is what grants us that classification?
Yeah.
Or something that we've done to acquire that designation?
It's density.
Right, okay.
The urban aid, urban aid communities, the communities that received money to help their school districts were the ones that were considered exempt from being any of the program like 20, 30 years ago.
Mr. Scott, do you have anything that you would like to say to the board regarding the ordinance that we're looking at from the council?
Good evening. William Scott again. At the past Montclair Housing Commission meeting, we took a complete look at both of the updated ordinances as it relates to the affordable housing component of the land use ordinance, as well as the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And we've, we had several questions about the new definitions and some of the new terminology. COA was, was one of the major concerns we had. There was paragraphs that removed COA. There were paragraphs that referred back to COA and state regulations, federal regulations. So, we were, we were very concerned. Unfortunately, Janet was on vacation at that particular meeting, but we were going to, we're in the process of forwarding our concerns from the Housing Commission to Janet to take a look at them before they finalize the ordinance, I guess from a council standpoint.
How, how long do you think that it will be before you have that into Janice?
I will make sure we have that done by the end of this week, for sure.
Well, and, and I think that can be part of our recommendation, that the council review your comments, you know, and make any appropriate adjustments for consistency purposes and for clarification purposes.
But overall, you know, we were in agreement with the, the changes. We still, still, but we definitely were in support of the continued 20% set aside. The set aside now will be for Montclair residents, okay? The only thing that we wanted to understand, matter of fact, one of our recommendations that we put it right out on the table right now, when it comes to area of redevelopment and areas of rehabilitation, we wanted the 20% to continue to be a part of that, because in the past, the council would make a determination of what the affordable housing commitment might be. So, one of our recommendations from the Housing Commission was to, overall, make sure that the 20% set aside was, was across the board, okay? So, that was one of our significant concerns at that point in recommendations. The only other thing that we wanted to be clear of also, if there's any projects that happen to come into being that deal with federal funding, okay, those projects still would have to use the affirmative marketing process, which goes out to the region that Montclair is a part of. That region is about 100 towns, okay? It's Essex County, obviously, Hunterdon County, Warren County, there's another county in there, but it's at least 100 different towns that could have residents apply for that affordable housing if it dealt with federal or state funding, if the developer chose to use some funds in, in that nature. So, that was something that still will be in effect, okay?
Not too much we can do about that.
No, 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 but I'm going to just make sure we're still supporting that.
Mrs. Scott, I have a question for you. Is preference for Sandy, people impacted by Sandy, still part of the Affordable Housing Plan?
There was only one project that I was aware of that did utilize some Sandy funds, and that was the Talbot Street project. And other than that, I think those funds might be exhausted by now. But applicants in that Ocean County area were able to apply for that housing as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Further discussion?
I had one thing I wanted to throw out, and it had to do with the limit of five units is kind of where the affordable housing 20% kicked in. And I was just wondering, you know, what maybe this board thought about having it apply at least the cash-in-lou fraction to anything less than five units.
Well, they have to pay, they pay the fee, a development fee.
Okay.
So, if they don't, they already, they do pay us cash, but those are usually one and two family dwelling units if it's, if it's four or one or two apartments. So, they, they pay a cash contribution already.
Okay, so that's already baked in, so to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
So, based on discussion, I would propose that we send an opinion back to the council that, you know, we feel that in general, these changes are consistent with the master plan, that we think that it appropriate that the body of the ordinance be reviewed because we still feel there's some points of confusion with terminology where COA remains referred to and where it gets deleted, as one example, and that it be thoroughly reviewed to clear up all of those issues. And that while we have not had a chance to review the written comments from the Housing Commission, that the, we know that... We know that the Housing Commission is going to be supplying or, I don't know, we'll supply a copy. You know, when we looked at this, when we discussed this, we did not have a copy of it, but we did receive advice from the chair, co-chair of the Housing Commission, and that it's our recommendation that the council review the Housing Commission's written comments and address them, address those comments as appropriate. And is that...
There's just the one question that arose around 65-9D when it said the administrative agent designated by the Township of Montclair will ensure the affirmative marketing and whatnot. So we're not clear exactly who that individual would be.
No, no, that's not an individual. That's... We retain a firm that specializes...
Oh, it's like a third-party administrator that way.
We hire somebody who... They review all the documentation to make sure that the households are truly eligible.
But who on our end will make sure that they're actually complying with that is where the question was.
That's me.
Oh, so that would be you.
I'm the municipal housing liaison, so I oversee the administrative agents.
Got it, okay. Because earlier, we asked a question of who would actually follow up on them to make sure they're executing. So then it is you. Okay, got it, got it.
And perhaps we add in a... We add in the comment that there should be further review of the ordinance to see whether any other improvements could be made, as this was a limited review for consistency.
Right. Also for grammar and things. I can't help myself, but I found things that need to be changed.
Commas mean a lot in ordinances.
Let me survey the group here. On this, the one dealing with 347, the second page that starts...
347, which one?
Well, the littler one. The littler one.
No, but it...
The one is... This is 65, and this one, the little one, is 347, right?
Oh, 25?
Yeah. And the second page that starts 347-153, scope.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, yep.
You don't really mean to say to ensure the sufficient use of land. I think you mean efficient use of land, don't you?
I don't... That's the way it's written right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of things like that that need to change. But I don't want to be a proofreader in my second life here. But there are things like that, honestly, that...
Right.
All right, we still have a second?
Okay. It's motion by Chair Wynn, second by Mr. Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
All right.
Committee meetings?
Have any committees met?
The DRC meets monthly, and it's basically a preliminary... They do preliminary reviews of all cycling applications.
We have a review committee meeting later this week.
This week. Well, that's the revisions committees.
Revisions committee.
To talk about the Orange Road parking deck and the Montclair brewery.
We're supposed to look at the Board of Adjustments annual report and do something with that, and that got tabled?
I keep carrying that.
Yeah, yeah.
Until we have a meeting, it's not quite so full.
Yeah. Well, I have a question about that. It seems like many times that they don't have a quorum, that they say there's a possibility of...
Yeah, that's because with use variance application... They have a quorum, but the issue with the zoning board is you need to have a certain number of... Usually, only seven members can vote on a use variance.
Yeah.
And you have to have at least five yays to get a use variance approved. So when you only have six members there, applicants for use variances quite often don't want to proceed. And there's been a lot of turnover on the zoning board adjustments, so it's a constant battle.
Yeah, I mean, it seems a problem for applicants to have to deal with when they can't have their matter voted on, but you're saying it's not a problem for them, or they withdraw their application? Yeah, yeah.
I served as a member of that board, and what happens is, is that's what Janice is trying to say. If you're an applicant and you don't have a full board there...
Right.
And you have to get every vote there.
Yep.
They withdraw it. It's not that the board doesn't have a quorum, but they say thank you, no thank you.
Exactly.
They don't want to have to get every vote in the room.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, right.
So they wait until there's more people so they can have some no's and still succeed.
Well, that was just one of my comments, reviewing that annual report from them. It's like, why are they always like canceling this?
They have pre-alts.
But it's not the board canceling, it's the applicant.
I know, but the applications get canceled, yeah.
Right. So, okay.
All right, we have bills?
Yes, we have bills.
Motion, pay bills.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll have our functions.
Yeah, I paused for two seconds to see if anybody else has a question.